Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, April the 5th, 2023. It is two, it is 6:00 PM. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 8790101310546. I now call this meeting to order. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mejia, absent. Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Vegas.
I'm here.
Alicia, will anybody be dialing in by Zoom tonight?
I, no, mayor, no one's contacted me directly.
Thank you very much. We will now go into the invocation led tonight by Councilmember Anita Evans.
Before I get started, this is the week of Holy Week. So to each and every one of you, I just want to say, may God bless you and keep you and just continue to cover you. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you, come to you tonight, Father God, to say thank you. Thank you, Father, for waking each and every one of us up this morning, Father. Thank you for allowing us to be here, to be in this union. Father, we come to you now saying that we thank you for the city. We ask that you cover each and every one of the residents here. Watch over this council, Father God, protecting them, allowing them to be able to do the things that you have placed in their path, Father God. Lead each one of us, Father, in the path of righteousness. Father, we give you all the honor, the glory, and the praise as we say thank you in your son's precious name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Cici Gallegos.
Ready? Salute.
We will now move on to public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of making this, asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Let us see. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Do we have anyone in the, in the audience who would wish to speak on public comment?
Mayor, before we move forward, for the record, council member, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Inzamihia has arrived.
Yes, thank you. Welcome. Public comment.
Yes, I, my name is Pam Greewall, and I represent Madera American Little League. And I just want to address fundraisers that we're doing over at the golf, um, Muni Golf, um, Madera, actually municipal golf course. And I just wanted to know, I just learned that the city owns the golf course. That's how much I golf. And I just wanted to find out since this is a fundraiser for our youth to keep them busy with the baseball and everything. And golf courses costing us quite a bit. And I just wanted to know if there's any way that we can get a little break so we can actually make, put that money back into our community and do our fundraiser and replace like a, kind of a, we need a lot of, uh, equipment that needs to be replaced. So I just wanted the city council to kind of consider, and I brought the flyers and I can leave them here for you guys to look at and please participate as well. And we definitely need as many people as possible to support us with the Little League. And basically, the, they're costing us probably seventy-five percent of what we're gonna make. So that's quite a bit money, and we got, we're putting a lot of effort to, to bring the people on and share this on for Madera American. And if there's anything that city can do to give us a little break on that, I would appreciate that. And my number is on there, and if you guys can contact me afterwards, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pam. If you would hold on for just a second, no, 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 Pam, you can sit down. We need to approve the agenda. I've got excited and I skipped that. And we need to approve the agenda in order for us to move forward. So we will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on the agenda or make any comments?
No written public comment, mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to my comment, uh, my, my colleagues for comments or approval of the agenda, and I'll ask for a motion also.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as it is.
One second. Motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Vegas, second by Councilmember Montes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we can continue on with public comment. Step up.
Good evening. Buenas tardes. My name is Arturo Martinez Jr. I'll be temporarily filling in for Joyce Dale. I'm with, I'm a district rep with the Office Director Caballero. So for the next couple of weeks while she's not here, I'll be filling it out. I'll leave some of my business cards here, just in case you're working with any matters with her. That way I can deal with that until she comes back.
If you do deal, those with Alicia, she'll make sure that everybody gets. Thank you. Welcome. Any further public comment?
Hello, I'm Alicia Brown with Project Run Madera. I wasn't sure if I'm supposed to present during this time during open comment or if there is a specific section. Sorry, excuse me.
Okay, okay. Uh, any further public comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Uh, okay, there's no written public comment or anyone on Zoom?
No written public comment, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Alicia. We will now close, uh, public comment. There are no written communications and no presentations. Um, I believe, Arnaldo, you have an introduction?
Thank you, mayor. Will's gonna do this presentation. That's okay?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor Santos, Mayor Protem Mejia, and council members. Uh, I'd like to introduce Rafael Maggion. He is our new chief building official. Uh, he's coming to us from the city of Tulare where he's served as a building official since 2021. Rafael has twenty-five years of experience in both private and public sectors. He is a certified residential and commercial plans examiner, building inspector, and fire marshal. Very excited to be working with him. He's already doing great things for us, and we're very fortunate to have him. So I would ask that you all help me in welcoming him to the city of Madera.
Yeah, absolutely. Rafael, are you present? Is he present?
I am here.
Uh, all right. Would you like to say just a couple of brief words?
No, I think, uh, Will covered everything. Uh, he talked about my experience, and I'm very excited to be here with City of Madera, and I'm ready.
Okay, all right. That's what we like to hear. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to, uh, item A, there are no workshops. Uh, we will now move on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item B removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, close that. We'll bring it back to my colleagues for a motion and/or comments. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I still move to approve the consent calendar as is.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Vegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. Public hearings under item C1, public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan Funding Allocation. Marcela, do you have this items?
Does that work?
Isn't technology wonderful? All right.
Okay, good evening. Okay, good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. The item tonight is a public hearing for the CDBG 2023-24 Annual Action Plan Proposed Funding Allocations. Sorry. A little bit of background on this item. On February 27th, 2023, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development announced the 2023-24 CDBG funding allocations. As an entitlement jurisdiction, the city's 2324 CDBG funding allocation equals $981,730. On March 20th, 2023, council approved reallocating funds previously awarded to the Community Action Partnership of Madera County related to the 2020-21 Rapid Rehousing Program. The city is reallocating this amount to the Capital Project Public Improvements funding category. This increase results in a total eligible CDBG funding allocation for the 2324 program year to be $1,324,491. The objective of tonight's public hearing allows council to consider the block grant commission, uh, the block grant commission's annual action plan funding proposals. It also provides an opportunity for the public to provide council with comments on the funding proposals. It'll end allows council the opportunity to approve the tentative funding allocations for the 2023-24 Annual Action Plan. So in summary for this item, the city is eligible to apply for and receive annual CDBG funding through the development of its annual action plan and submission to HUD. HUD established three national objectives for the CDBG program. The first is a benefit to low and moderate income persons. The second is aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight. And the third is to meet an urgent need. Projects must meet at minimum one of these objectives. HUD also requires the identification of primary and secondary tier local funding priorities. The city identifies these local funding priorities in the 2020-2024 Consolidated Action Plan. The primary local funding priorities are quality housing and homelessness. The second tier funding priorities are neighborhood revitalization. This table is a summary of the applications received for the 2324 funding year. There are three different funding categories: administration, public service, and capital projects, public improvements. Two of the funding categories, as you can see, had, do have a threshold attached to them. The first category is administration. It does have a twenty percent maximum threshold. Therefore, the maximum that can be allocated this program year, it totals $196,346. The requested ground amount is higher than that at $216,346. The second funding category is public service. It has a fifteen percent maximum threshold. Therefore, the maximum that can be allocated this year equals $147,259. The requested ground amount equals $308,552. Capital projects and public improvements is the third funding category, and it does not have a threshold. The current year's allocation equals $638,125. Uh, when we add the reallocation of the 2020-21 CAPMC Rapid Rehousing Program in the amount of $342,761, that brings us to a total of $980,886 available for capital projects, public improvements. The maximum that can be allocated this year to projects equals just over 1.3 million. The requested ground amount equals just over 1.5 million. The first funding category we'll go over is the administration. There are two applications in this funding category. The eligible amount is $196,346. The first application came, comes on behalf of the city of Madera to oversee the CDBG program. The amount requested equals $196,346. The block grant recommends $176,346. The second application comes on behalf of CAPMC for the Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care Point-in-Time Count Administration. Uh, the amount requested is $20,000. The block grant commission recommends fully funding this project. The second funding, funding category is public service. Here are some of the applications. The first application received comes on behalf of Madera Coalition for Community Justice, the Youth Environmental Stewardship Project. The amount requested equals $26,032. The block grant commission recommends fully funding this project. The second application also comes on behalf of Madera Coalition for Community Justice. It is the Promotora Project. The amount requested equals $44,320. The block grant did not recommend funding this project. The third application comes on behalf of Project Run Madera for the Project Run Madera Project. The amount requested is $23,000. The block grant commission recommendation equals $5,527. The fourth application comes on behalf of Madera Rescue Mission for the Homeless Prevention and Services Project. The amount requested equals $35,000. The block grant commission recommends fully funding this project. The fifth application comes on behalf of Olive Charitable Organization, the Bennett House. The amount requested equals $31,400. The block grant recommendation is equal to $15,700. The sixth application for this category comes on behalf of Community Action Partnership for the Housing Stabilization Project. The amount requested is $10,000. The block grant recommendation, um, is recommending to fully fund this project. The seventh application comes on behalf of Madera County Association of Realtors Down Payment Assistance Program. The amount requested is $50,000. To, there is no funding recommendation for this particular project because two of the members had to abstain from voting, um, on a proposal for this project due to a conflict of interest. However, the block grant, uh, block grant commission intended to propose $25,000 for this project. Therefore, this amount should have been allocated for council to consider. The last application, uh, received, not the last, but the eighth application received comes on behalf of the City Parks Department, Madera Senior's Nutrition and Recreation Program. The amount requested is $88,800 with the block grant recommendation of $30,000. Here is, this table, um, has all of the eight applications. We can see that the amount requested is $308,552. The block grant recommendation appears to be on the table, $122,259. However, please keep in mind that the intended proposal of the $25,000 is a difference between the eligible public service allocation of $147,000 to, I'm sorry, $147,259, um, and the amount recommended by the block grant commission. The final funding, funding category is for capital projects, public improvements. The, um, eligible allocation for this funding category is $980,886. The amount requested exceeds that, um, a little bit. It comes in the amount of $982,500. There were three applications received. The first is on behalf of the City Engineering Department, Clinton Street Sewer and Water Improvements. The amount requested is $617,500. The block grant commission recommends fully funding this project. The second comes on behalf of the City Parks Department, Centennial Park Pool. The amount requested is $215,000, and the block grant commission recommends fully funding this project as well. The third comes on behalf of the City Parks Department, Frank Bergon Center. The amount requested is $150,000. The block grant commission recommendation is equal to $148,386. So the public review and comment period, with council approval of the, of the tentative 2023-24 CDBG Annual Action Plan Funding Allocations, a thirty-day public review and comment period will begin today, April 5th, 2023. The CDBG Annual Action Plan is available upon request. It, uh, will be found on the city's website at www.madera.gov/cdbg-aap after this meeting, so it'll be up, um, by tomorrow morning. Public review and comment period, um, continuation. All interested parties are invited to provide comments to the city for consideration before finalizing the CDBG Annual Action Plan. Public comments can be provided in writing by mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637, or by email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov. The public review and comment period will expire May 5th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Next steps. Request for council to open the public hearing. Request that council review and approve the tentative CDBG 2023-24 Annual Action Plan Funding Recommendations. Staff will bring any public comments received to the May 17th, 2023 meeting for council consideration. Request that council consider any public comments and approve the final 2023-24 CDBG Annual Action Plan during the May 17th, 2023 meeting. Upon final council approval, staff will submit the 2023-24 Annual Action Plan to HUD. That concludes my presentation. I know there are some applicants, um, here wishing to present. I'll defer to council. If you haven't, if there are questions for me, I can answer those now unless we just want to move on to the presentations.
You can move on to public comment and certainly bring you back up if necessary. We will now pu, open, uh, public comment, um, on this issue with the CDBG funds. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and, uh, make your comments heard. Hilda, um, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to note that, I'm sorry I didn't, uh, notice it before, but concerning the Down, Down Payment Assistance, uh, line item from the Madera County Association of Realtors, I believe that what's before you on the table should be, is correct, and it's zero. Uh, because that you can't say what the, the BGC intended if there was a conflict of interest and they didn't vote. So I would just ask if you disregard their intent because they did not have a quorum to vote on this matter because of their conflict of interest. Of course, you can, uh, include their, their request, uh, on your own.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you, Hilda. DJ Becker, Chair of the Block Grant Commission. Um, Alyssa Aronando is trying to log in on Zoom. I don't know if we've managed that. Alicia? Oh, okay. Is she there? Okay. Just a couple of quick comments. We were very pleased to fund all of the capital improvement programs, McNally Park, Swimming Pool Park, and, and of course, the sewer line. That was just amazing that we were able to cover all that. That being said, we are never able to meet all of the requests for public services, and they're all worthy applications. We also had some scheduling changes. We normally have at least one, possibly two, uh, review meetings before we allocate. And in those review meetings, we were able to interact and ask questions of applicants, go over receipts, and verify that the receipts submitted met the procedural applications. So we regret the changes. It was a little chaotic this year, and I think some outcomes could be different if we'd had that allocation or that pre-allocation examination meeting, which I would like to advocate strongly for during our next cycle. So, thank you.
It's easier this way. I actually have it right here. Dude, it's on top of it. Yeah, we can do public, let me go ahead and minimize this.
I have a fracture. Good evening, distinguished council members, and most respected mayor, Santos Garcia. My name is Yolanda Pietri Piroga. I have been a resident of Madera for the last five years or so. And, uh, I became a widow about two years ago. And since then, I've been looking for an outlet to get out of the house and do something. But at that time, because of the pandemic, the senior center was not available to people like me. And being a retired special education teacher, I started tutoring my grandchildren, keeping myself busy, uh, pick them up from school, et cetera, et cetera. But I wanted something more than being a loyal babysitter. So when I found out that Bergon, uh, Senior Center was opening up, I jumped for it. Of course, with a push from my sister who came to visit me from Kansas City. So to make a long story short, I joined, and ever since then, I just love it. From the music to the games, to the coloring, to the art, to the, uh, field trips, to going to the movies, to meeting people. Because I'm a trilingual person, I'm able to communicate with people that can't speak English. So I speak Spanish, I speak Italian, I speak French. You know, I'm a well-rounded, holistic person. So my plea here tonight is to please continue the program so that other people, as myself, just like me, can have something to do other than just sit at home and watch the boob tube. So the boob tube is not my thing, you know, unless if I see something on Netflix, you know? Other than that, it's not my thing. Oh, America's Got Talent. That's about it. So that's my plea. Please, please consider us as persons of being senior citizen age. Or like in Spanish, they say, las personas de la tercera edad. Es muy importante para nosotros tener algo que hacer todo el día y no estar estancado en la casa. Muchísimas gracias.
Gracias, gracias. Gracias.
Which one's yours?
So all of that's me. I'm all. Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Yes. Okay, no worries.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Frank Ortiz. I'm a resident of Madera for the past twenty-plus years. I volunteer at the Senior Center. And I started off as a as a guest for the last five years. And as my friend Yolanda said, it's a wonderful place for us retirees to to go and get out of the house. And I see there firsthand all of the wonderful things the senior centers provide, Frank Burgon Pan Am. On a daily basis, we're getting, I'm seeing that we're getting new guests come in, you know, just just who are like ourselves, a lot of times pushed by their family members who want to get them out of the house. And we appreciate all the services. My friends and I have many several friends who aren't here. But I'd like to speak for them too. We appreciate all the services the centers provide, the city provides for us. As Yolanda mentioned, the movies, the field trips, the snacks, you know, the all the all the there are a lot of benefits that the senior centers provide for us that people don't realize. And I think one of the most important ones is the the being able to socialize with other people our own age and and people who are in the same situations as we are. So I ask that when distributing the funds at the council, please take, think, second, just take special attention to what the seniors, the seniors that we have here in town and the needs. And and please continue to provide the centers with the funding required. Because there are a lot of people that benefit daily, Monday through Friday, and who I'm sure that you folks just don't happen to get wind of, you know, and they probably we're not the kind of people who will go and say, we need this, we need that, we want this or that. We're just, you know, quiet in the background, but we're there. So please continue to to provide for us. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. There are times that.
I like three. Three's a good number. It went away. Let me see. I had to go.
Third time is a charm. I think it's my turn. Sorry, I have allergies. So my name is April Molina. If you don't know who I am, I'm the current director of Olive Charitable Organization. And the unfortunate part of my job is I don't get to choose when somebody has a meltdown at our safe house. And so I was unable to attend the CDBG meeting to answer their questions. And there's just a few things I'd like to clear up for you guys as you make your decisions. So one of the things that was brought to the attention of everybody is the fact that our building is donated. And I actually, I love him, but I blame Dan Foss for that because he tells everybody our building is donated. Our building is not donated. We actually have a lease agreement with Newton Property. The property owner is Alicia Bennett. That's why we call it the Bennett House. And we pay twelve hundred fifty dollars per month in rent every single month. You can see that I posted it up there. You can see where it's signed. The scribble on the right is Dan's signature as chairman of our board of directors. And our lease actually ends at May thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, when we will have to renew everything all over again. The reason he calls it a donated property is because we will never get kicked out. It is it will be an ongoing lease. And she gives us a smoking hot deal on rent because it is it was a professional building. We had to have the zoning change to residential so we could have people live in the building legally. And and she could probably charge three times the amount she charges us if she had kept it a dentist office. And so that is one thing, probably the biggest thing I would like to clear up is we do pay her fifteen thousand dollars a year in rent. The second thing that was brought up was our use of substances, nicotine and CBD. We do use CBD gummies. We buy them at Be alive vitamins. We have a very close relationship with the owner. These particular CBD gummies do not have THC. We make sure that everybody in our house can still pass a drugs, a drug test. I do drug test at random. It has ashwagandha in it, which is recommended for a very high anxiety and depression. And we also you, we also buy cigarettes for our girls. They smoke, they vape. When you are dealing with addicts coming off of meth and heroin and cocaine, nicotine is the least of our worries. And to be honest, if it if buying a pack of cigarettes or two once in a while will keep somebody out of prostitution to get money because it is quick, easy money, then we will buy the cigarettes. I smoke. I don't know how many of you know that, but I know, look at you. I know. I started when my dad died last year. Sorry. I'll quit this year. But anyway, the other thing is none of these purchases were ever submitted to the CDBG grant. This is paid for through donor money and they know this. Another thing that was brought up that I did not put on here was a haircut. It was actually a hair job. Like I I don't, you can tell I don't do my hair, right? It is not my thing. But we had a survivor living in our house whose mother passed away suddenly and she asked to get her hair done for the funeral. And we said, yes, absolutely. We will get your hair done for the funeral. So the day before her mother's funeral, we actually searched around. People were wanting three hundred and fifty dollars for to get her hair done because it was colored. And we found somebody who would do it for two hundred and twelve. And that was the cheapest we could find. We actually hit somebody up in Fresno through a whole bunch of volunteers looking around for people. Anyway, so and any any type of charges that are on our bank account, if the if the commission has any questions, they're free to contact me. I I always have an explanation. The survivors that we handle, I don't know how much you know about human trafficking, but the International Board of Psychiatry states that seventy-one percent of human trafficking survivors suffer from complex post-traumatic stress disorder. And this is a very high level of PTSD. It's been equated to the same PTSD level that combat troops have when they come home from war. And so these women are incredibly vulnerable. And this is probably the most vulnerable women in in our city are the ones that we house. If we don't get at least ten thousand more in CDBG funding, we will be forced to look at closing our safe house in Fresno that's funded by donors. And that particular safe house has twenty-four hour trauma life coaching staff. And that is actually where we place our more severe cases. So I would ask for an additional ten thousand. It is my fault. I was not at this meeting. And I take full responsibility, but I'm coming just to advocate for a little bit more money so we don't have to close the Fresno house because it is important to the women living there right now. So that's it. Unless you have questions for me. I'm I just wanted to clear up those things that were kind of brought up and brought to my attention after the meeting because I was unable to be there. So I apologize to the commission for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
D J Becker, I'd like to make a point of clarification. A random bank statement was included in our materials that we examined from the dais on our only meeting. And it was quite inadvertent information that we incorrectly assumed applied to block grant spending, which was not the case. So we had the material presented to us. It was an oversight, should not have been in our materials, but it was. And we had few, if any, meeting or minutes to make a decision and we were unable to reach April. Like I said, a lot of this was due to the condensed meeting schedule and the lack of a pre-meeting that would have allowed us to be more in-depth with our examination. So we went with what we had. It was incorrect and I apologize sincerely. I hope the council will consider her request.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, members of City Council, Baldwin Moye on behalf of the Madera Coalition. We concur with the committee's recommendation of the youth program. And I'm here to speak about the program that was not recommended for funding. And that's the Madera Promotor Program. And so when I use the term promotor, it's somewhat of a misnomer or so. What I'm really referring to is really a navigator who kind of works with a particular community to kind of get out the needed information, the services, the resources at a grassroots level. When so so this really addresses the hospital closure. When I first heard about the hospital closure, one of the first conversations I had with I had with Supervisor Gonzalez, and I said then to her that there's a real need, a really pressing need of people for there to be this kind of a whether people serving as as an ambassador in particular to the the monolingual Spanish, the low income and the farm worker community, who oftentimes don't know what to do when this happens. And they really had a loss once the hospital closes because the hospital is more than just acute care provider. It really is the anchor of the entire delivery system in the county. So it really encompasses services that are not always directly under the hospital. I I think that when when this was presented, I, you know, with all due respect, I think it really was understood what this program was intended to do. So so there were comments from the committee, for example, well, you know, you can get this kind of information from the camera in the center. No, you can't. You can get it from the Health Department. And maybe you can also resort to the the Camarena Promotor Program. Okay, first of all, what we're talking about is much more than just what to do, who to call, where to go. It really has to do with dealing with a population that's very vulnerable, that that's on the edges. And that's not how they get their information. And we learned this from the COVID campaign where the coalition worked with the Public Health Department and work with UC Davis to get people tested, vaccinated, and then boosted. And what they understood was was that this is a community that really suffers more than the rest of the community. And they get sick more than the rest of the community, yet they're reticent about getting help. That they're skeptical about getting help and have all the questions that goes beyond, well, if you need emergency care, we don't have it here. You just go to go to St. Agnes and that would take care of it. It's not one of those things where it's once and done. It's one of the things that oftentimes it takes multiple touches to really be able to convince them in terms of what they need to do. So by that, I mean, you could some if somebody says, well, you know, where do you go in in event now? If you need emergency services, you say, well, call nine one one, or you can just go to St. Agnes and it's twenty miles, whatever. It's it's much more complicated than that when you deal with it with a with a population that one really has limited health literacy understanding, they unreliable Wi-Fi access, unreliable phone service, unreliable transportation and so on. So when you say to somebody, one is twenty miles, whatever, well, twenty miles to get from the city to to say Agnes, for example, on average, it's about thirty-five minutes to forty minutes getting, you know, assuming that there's no traffic to begin with. But beyond that, oftentimes people don't go because there's questions about, well, is it cover? What what's the transportation? What's the ambulance that does it go there? What are the services it covers? There's questions about what if I come from a mixed family? What about that? Does my coverage cover that, for example? What about immigration status? Would this somehow affect my application to be a permanent resident? And so on, right? And so when we talk about these navigators, it's just not handing out a card with with some of the basic information. But be able to follow through with them, be able to to answer them, be able to be to understand their cultural beliefs, their behaviors, their values, be able to answer them in simple terms that they can understand. But also be able to provide them with additional service, for example. You don't just tell them, well, okay, this is where you want to go. You may also remind them, if I'm medical, for example, that that there's this renewal process that's ongoing right now, that they need to go ahead and and renew their eligibility, otherwise there'll be gaps in their services. There's other information that is also provided to them. And and so so that for this particular population, they don't rely on the internet to get the information. You know, some of you who were at the town hall would remember that the Health Department handed out a a piece of paper with a with a Q R code. That's not how to get the information. They get the information from talking to people, people that they trust, people who are linguistically and culturally competent, that understands them, that they trust. So what's so when we present this program, we're saying that this is a needed program. It really represents an investment by the city to ensure that these people get the help that they need, to get the services that they need. With the closure of the hospital, it really, it really deepens the understanding of the disparity in terms of healthcare for particularly individuals, people like myself, whatever, and those of you up there would be able to easily access that kind of information. But for these, this particular population that we're talking about, you really do need to to have that kind of hands-on contact with them, communication with them, where they could come back and talk to you again and follow up with you. You really need, and so what the program proposes is really providing a bridge between the healthcare providers and the healthcare system. And now we're talking about a system that sometimes goes outside of the county with this very vulnerable community. And to provide them with these kind of trusted messengers. And so when I, when the term promotor is used, that's what it means. When the advisory committee talked about promotor, when they referred to the Camarena Centers promotor, that's not what those promotor do. What they do is they kind of, what they provide is kind of like, kind of like, more like health education information about, let's say, you know, sugary drinks or a balanced diet and things of that nature. It doesn't provide what they thought it does. That's not what it does. And currently, there's a real void in this community. And this is what the the program is is proposing to do. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make comments regarding CDBG funding? Absolutely.
Such luck with PowerPoints. Let's see what I can do, right? Come on, Marcella. Just go from the beginning. You can just go to that. Good evening, council. I mean, good evening, Mayor Santos and Mayor Pro Tim Mejia, council members, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Olga Saccido Garcia, and I'm here to do a quick presentation, three minutes or less, on our aging services request. See if it works. There we go. Hey, raise your hands for aging services, right? The City of Madera has proudly served senior citizens in Madera for over four decades. Program and services are available for all community members, fifty-five and older. And two senior centers currently at the Frank Burgon Senior Center located at TU thirty-eight South East Street and the Pan Am Community Center at seven oh three East Sherwood Way. We are all aging, so and we're living longer. So according to the California Department of Aging, a hundred and eighty-nine point seven percent increase by the year twenty thirty. Oops, sorry. I apologize. What we're really focusing today is we What we're really focusing today is we want to feed seniors. That's our next step. We were eloquently shared information from two of our senior participants, how we have a plethora of activities. And so right now we're looking forward to now serving at meals at our senior centers. And this is what we're looking to utilize the spending for, providing hot congregant meals at both our centers and also providing shelf-safe meal boxes. And those are, you know, with our, our, our grocery bill getting a little higher, sometimes you need a little extra. So there's this wonderful opportunity to purchase meal boxes that are available to probably get seven to 10 meals out of it for these boxes. Also to holiday and special occasion refreshments. And you can always, you're all welcome for a nice warm cup of coffee and some tea. These are just a few of our programs currently, as you can see, like I shared. We're really getting into the wellness, recreation, educational components. And we're really focusing on the total mind, body and spirit and services for, for seniors. And actually it's aging. Well, that's the new term now, aging services. And we also are touching base now, we're really starting to get back into the arts and crafts. We, our, our computer lab is quite active, all our excursions that you heard a little bit about, but there's so much more. These are our collaborative partners currently. You know, we do try to extend our services with our partners that are available here with the city and county services. And so we're really excited about continuing that opportunity. And also any, any, any funding that we see with these collaborative partners, we're, we're definitely trying to dip in with that. Um, just a few pictures. I just thank you for your consideration and I open up for any questions you may have regarding the program and request.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment if I may. Olga, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Looking at your flyers there, it just kind of made me realize that I'm three years away from.
I'm right there with you, man. I mean, I'm looking at some people we all know. And it's, it's a, you know what, buddy, it's, it's not ours, it's not your grandpa or your parents' senior center anymore. It's this acting, active older adults and we welcome this opportunity. But you know, there's a discrepancy. It's hard programming for 50, 60, 70, 80, 90 and plus. So we, I mean, I was hired back in the Larry Hibden days where you said you help those that can help themselves. And this is where that money is going is for the meal part. I think we can handle the wellness and the, and the educational component that we're really starting, as you can see. God, buddy, come on over for some Tai Chi or some yoga anytime. But there are some seniors in need that, that's the only meal they get. That's the only coffee they get. That's the only interaction they get. Some of these folks that spoke here today, there are several others with the same kind of story. And I'm privileged to be a part of this movement that you see with positive, active, older aging. What's wrong with that? I'm in that 55-plus era, you know, I'm a double, you know, I have, you know, my husband and I, we don't have any children. They're out of the house. So now what, right? We want to do some stuff. So it's a great opportunity for us to really expand. But like I shared with you today, this is really important that those meals, it's service. And those, it brings in other opportunities, like what some of the members said, you know, she's a widower. And once she, once she came in, she started, okay, let me do exercise. Okay, let me do this. And now the other component that's missing that we have always hung our hat on, and that is meals. So we need to serve those hot meals, folks, you know, like everybody in their kitchens, right? That's where you gather with the food. So that's what we want to bring. Thank you so much for your time. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, looking at the flyers again, I'm sure that we do a good outreach of reaching out to folks because I think when they think 50, 50, they may not see themselves as seniors. But this is actually the age that you can participate.
55 plus. So you're not making the cut, yes, yes?
Your flyers there said 50.
Some do, some program do. And you know what, my friend, we, we don't send anyone away. Currently we're not required to have an age limit. And I, actually it's transition aging, right? Get ready.
Okay, good. Bittersweet for me because I'm looking forward to it, but sweet because it seems like it's a really nice, active program.
We try. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And just be, just be aware that there are probably going to be a lot of speakers regarding every organization. So, you know, in interest of time, Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I just wanted to piggyback off of both of you. I have gone over, I have attended and the, the bands that you guys have are awesome. You know, the food that you guys have, the, the dancing, the entertainment. My neighbor works at Pan Am. So man, she gets up in the morning and she's just fired up. And she's like, come on, come on over there. So you guys do a really good job. So my hat is off to, to all of you, to, to Mr. Joe sitting there beside you and all of you guys. You guys do a really good job. So thank you. Keep up the good work. And I am in the range of 55 and over.
Would anybody else like to step up to the podium from the organizations and speak on the, on the public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council staff, Alex Solazar. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Madera County Association of Realtors for the Down payment assistance grants that was proposed to the committee. I want to just clarify a couple of things and reiterate some of the things that was presented to committee. First of all, Alyssa and Candy, both are very good committee members, appointed to the committee thanks to council persons like yourselves, but had to recuse themselves from making a decision because they're both president and past president of the County Association of Realtors, but no financial interest. Madera County Association of Realtors is a nonprofit organization. It's a service organization strictly for real estate. So they have no financial interest, but because of just clarification, they had to recuse themselves. And that's why we're presenting or sharing to you some stuff today. The original proposal for the grant was for $50,000 for a down payment assistance grant. And what the association intends to do with that is actually have 10 $5,000 applications to go to 10 would-be homeowners. So these are people that we are, that are currently renters right now within the community, within City of Madera, which would be one of our guidelines, who intended by a, be first-time home buyers, occupy the primary residence here in the City of Madera, not using any co-borrowers or co, I should say cosigners, not, but they use co-borrowers. They can go to new construction, whatever it might be, but we want to get, encourage homeownership within the community. There's a lot of revenue benefits for the city. For instance, when one becomes a homeowner, and so we want to encourage that. But also we felt like, for instance, for this particular program, this does also free up housing for people who need rental assistance. We talked about transitional housing today. We have also, we understand the grant committee also talks about homelessness. And so freeing up those rentals by making those tenants who qualify now become homeowners would be the main goal of the association. And it's not to help just 10 individuals, but 10 families. And then it could have just a bigger ripple effect for that benefit. The association has actually had a history of giving out grants for down payment assistance. Previously, we've had up to $50,000 from the California Association of Realtors Housing Affordability Fund, which we got from those contributions. Those are actually from us Realtors. We donate to that group. That group then decides, and we applied in the past and we've given out those monies over the years. Gosh, I think I started that about 10 plus years ago. So it's been an ongoing thing. Unfortunately for us, HAF or Housing Affordability Fund is out of money. So we are now trying to find other resources and this one came up and we thought it was a good opportunity. It meets all of the HUD guidelines, which is a part of the grant as well. And so we hope that you would consider the new proposal of $25,000 to help us have five would-be renters turn into homeowners and then free up some housing and all those kinds of things. Okay? I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else like to step up?
Good evening, Mayor Santos and I really, and City Council members and Mayor Pro Tim. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Imay Ritoris and I've been a Realtor for 30 years. We want to be able to help people in homeownership. And this will give us opportunity to help people that are first-time buyers with the down payment assistance that will just get them right over that hump to be able to have enough money to be qualified. And we do have a lot of other down payment assistance programs that are available, but sometimes they have to pay them back as a second. And having a grant is, puts the family in a better position for them to be able to, be able to enjoy their home. We do have a need for housing. This will automatically vacate that rental home to accommodate another home, another family that needs that rental. So we, we do ask that you do approve the $25,000 for us to, to be able to do that and continue. We already have a setup that, where we collect the, the applications. We've done, been doing this like for 10 years, as Alex mentioned. And we just would love to have the additional funds. Do you have any questions for us?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
And a question, and maybe I should have asked Alyssa while he was out there too, but since you're there, Almina, thank you. So Alex did mention that it meets all of the HUD guidelines. My question would be, because these funds are tied to HUD, would those funds be appropriated for people that are low to moderate income? And that would meet one of the guidelines. Would that be the, the answer? Is that something that those funds would be tied to specifically for those specific people that meet HUD guidelines?
We've been having an opportunity to, as long as they were a first-time buyer, it didn't necessarily have to be low to mod, low to moderate income. But we, you know, people that need the fu, the funding is usually the FHA, but here's Alex.
Step up to the microphone, please.
I, I just want to clarify, for any project to be eligible even for down payment assistance, it must meet low mod income families. It cannot serve families outside of those income ranges. HUD has established income limits and HUD also has established limits on the appraisal of homes. So there are maximum thresholds. In other words, when the appraisal of a home has to be at or below a certain threshold as well. So there are limits in place.
So when those funds then flow to the borrower or the recipient, that recipient has to meet that guideline is what I'm doing, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. And that was my question earlier. So thank you, Alex.
I was just going to say that whatever the guidelines are for this particular grant, they would be, become our guideline. So in the past, for example, let's give you a quick example. We've had, like I said, grants from the California Association of Realtors Housing Affordability Fund. And because we represent the entire county of the associate for Realtors, we opened it up to all county residents. Because this is a city grant, we're going to make it very specific to city occupants only. Must be renters coming to first-time home buyers, cannot be, cannot have cosigners, can have co-borrowers. And then of course meet the income requirements.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Alex. And thank you, Marcella and Almera.
One more point of clarification, if I might. This is listed as a priority need for the 2023, 2024 Action Plan as being a top, top priority need. Housing, which increases the supply of affordable rental housing, housing for low-income families, seniors and people with disabilities at the top of our list. So that was a factor in our consideration.
Thank you, DJ.
Would anyone else like to step up to the podium?
Good evening, Delisha Brown with Project Run Madera and I have my team with me here. If you guys want to introduce yourself.
I'm Bertha Melgoza, Treasurer, Project Run Madera.
And I'm Hope Melgoza, Vice President.
And my mother over there, Yolanda Cardas, events coordinator.
Baby?
Also babysitter of the night. I'm going to maximize my time here and let this video play as I speak. Is it, is it playing? This is. Okay, so our goal with Project Run Madera is to provide equitable access for our student athletes and runners here in Madera and eventually local areas. But for right now, Madera, providing them with running resources that entails running shoes, that entails sports bras, shorts and shirts. What you're seeing on this video is our giveaway that we just had, was it two Mondays ago? Two Mondays ago, yes. We served 400 student athletes. Girls received sports bras, shirts, shorts and running shoes. Guys received shoes and shirts and everyone received socks as well. Unfortunately, our budget did not allow for us to buy the boys' shorts this year. We were gracious and grateful to Wazelle, who donated the girl shorts for us in totality. So we didn't have to pay for those. So with that being said, we are very thankful and hopeful for any monies coming our way so that we can continue to serve our youth. It makes an incredible difference when you have student athletes coming up to you and telling you, you know, with almost tears in their eyes, that they were waiting for the shoes to, to, for them to receive these pair of shoes because they're running with holes in their shoes. It, it hits you in the heart. And so we want to be able to continue to serve our youth. And we just hope you'll join us in that. And please do not play another video. Thank you. Any questions?
Also member Viegas.
Yeah, I have a question for you, non-runaway. How much is the amount you request for that? You have any number?
Yes, for, for shorts specifically?
For shoes or whatever.
Okay, so shoes, we got a pretty good deal with our vendor this year and it ran us about $9,000 for shoes. Our girls' items were donated, so luckily we did not have to pay for those this year. Every year is different, right? Because depending on what vendors we can get and what deals we can, you know, what hearts we can touch, really. And so shorts run about $25 a pair and we're looking at 400 athletes. So I teach history, so I'm not going to do that math for you.
So you don't have the whole?
I do have it.
There, how much you, you needed?
Yeah, it, it is in the 23,000 is what we did request. That is for a budget for us to function and fully serve. But like I said, given the year, right? We don't know what's going to be given to us and what we will have to pay for. This year we made close to treasurer, help me here, $16,000, $16,000. And so that is where we fell short in not being able to provide shorts for boys when our, our goal was $20,000 for the year.
Well, I, I'm a runner too, so I will support your request.
Thank you.
Hopefully we can be able to come out with something, but you got to give us the, the amount that you need.
So I believe it was written in the presentation and I.
Yeah, I support you this, your request and hopefully we can be able to, you can get something. And that was my, my question.
Okay. Oh, I didn't put the number, total amount there, but I can, I can, it is broken down in the proposal, I believe. Yes. Okay. And I can further answer that question. And I can further answer that question at a different.
Okay, well according to the, maybe you can get 5,000. So whatever you can get, right?
Absolutely.
It'll be alright, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Would anyone else like to come up to the podium? Does any of my colleagues have any questions of any of the presenters? Otherwise we'll move on and bring it back to council. Also, woman Gallegos.
Um, I just have a comment about our committee, our CDBG committee. I'd like to thank them for their time and effort to go through these applications to make sure that they are meeting the checks and balances. And going through and making sure that they are accountable for everything that we're asking. Cause we're the ones that are going to be on the hook for the money that we're, that we're receiving from the federal government for this. So I would like to thank them for their time and effort and Maricela and your staff for taking the time to do that. All the applicants, every year we say this and it's true to our hearts that we wish we had more funding to fund everyone. Councilmember Rodriguez and I went to Washington DC a few years ago and pleaded with, with HUD and Secretary of State and of housing and saying that the, our smaller cities need more money. We have more need and we will still advocate for more funding so that we can fund more projects fully and more people would be up to come out and do more for our community. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. April, could you come up to the podium? I have a, I just have one question I wanted to ask you. That is regarding, you mentioned the Fresno home?
Yes.
And we, we fund Madera?
CDBG only pays for the Madera house. The, the, the funding for the Fresno house is through donors. We actually run on about $180,000 a year budget. So CDBG is only for the city of Madera and we are very, I'm, you can come check my files. They're about this thick.
I trust you.
Yeah, and I've got names on all the receipts to make sure so and so is living in the Madera house. Yes, it is, everything submitted to CDBG is for Madera only.
Thank you. That was just the one question that I had because it, it just, as soon as you mentioned Fresno.
I know, everybody hates Fresno. I hate Fresno too.
As long as you understand that CDBG funds are for Madera residents, we're good to go.
Yes, thank you.
Very much. Alex, if you could come back to the podium, I got some questions regarding the, the project. I will tell you right up front, I'm, I'm kind of like, I, I, I love the idea of helping people get their down payment assistance. I think it's a very, very worthwhile project. I'm, I'm not sure I have had enough time to digest everything that I need to do to make a decision on this project. This is a brand new project. We have not done this with the city regarding CDBG funds before. And so that I, I have some concerns that we haven't had enough time to vet it. But certainly it is a worthwhile project to help folks. So the first thing that I'm concerned about is if a person gets a down payment assistance and then flips the house, are they allowed to flip the house? Do you have anything in writing prohibiting them flipping the house within a couple of years? Or are they free to flip a house?
Well, so it's not available to flippers. It has to be an owner occupant anyway. HUD guidelines, which are also FHA guidelines and, and all those kinds of things, you can't sell that loan anyways for a certain amount of time. So that's, that's not flipping. Flipping is I buy it in distress, I repair it, rehab it, and I sell it for fair market value. That is flipping. That is not an owner occupant. That would be fraud and we are not promoting that at all. So no, it would be owner occupant, primary residence. And then of course, all of the income guidelines as well.
Right, yeah. And then the other one is the question I had is whether we, you mentioned prioritizing and, and first time home buyers was one of the priorities.
It would be the only, it wouldn't even be a priority, it would be the only condition. It would be first time home buyers because we want, we want to, so you're going back to your comment about, you know, we've never done this before. And is it, you know, information more to digest if it's even in the guidelines of, or the premise of the, the grant itself? In the grant guidelines, it does promote, or at least in the, the wording of the grants itself, that to help housing, provide housing homelessness and so on. And so we think that this is part of that equation, right? The same evening, by the way, Mr. Mayor, I was on Zoom with your housing element. And even the presenter at the same time too, said that the city should do more to provide resources for homeownership, right? And it's all part of the cycle, right? There are different types of homeownership. There are like you pointed out a second ago, investment ones. Flipping is a, not a technical term, it's a common street term. But you know, language, who will. But going back again, I guess prioritizing and not comment, it's not necessarily prioritizing, but we can take your conditions, we can take HUD's conditions and make it the condition of the grant, right? As long as we don't discriminate against sex, religion, ethnicity, anything like that, then obviously we can do whatever we want. The guidelines of yours, HUD's, the committees, and of course the associations. And put it out there for, you know, people to apply for. I'll go even further. So we are Madera County Association of Realtors, again nonprofit, funded by the dues paid for by local realtors like myself, affiliates, lenders and so on and so forth within the industry, right? When we've put out these grants before, and again, I've done this before, almost 10 plus years with Chamber of Commerce, CAR, California Housing Association of Realtors. We made it very clearly because this grant was coming through the County Association of Realtors, that the member applying, the Realtor, had to be a Realtor member, paying Realtor dues to our association. And the lender had to be a lender affiliated with our association. So we didn't want any money at all, including grant money and even, even money, commissions, income, whatever, going anywhere outside of the city. Those are our guidelines, for example. So we would also include those to make sure that money stayed into the community. Again, the grant money got promoted more housing regarding, you know, just not just providing. Obviously it's not enough money to build housing, but it is definitely enough money, we think, to help people move and encourage homeownership.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Particularly the point that you made about the first time home buyers. As you well know, as a Realtor, our children are being crushed by debt in their schooling to try to become professionals in our communities. And being able to provide them with the assistance would be really, really good. And other communities are doing this very same thing.
Absolutely. And so I guess I'll just make one more of the comment too, is that again, on the housing element, and I was listening to Zoom and trying to present at the same time, that same evening. In the housing element, I commented on that Zoom that we need affordable housing for all incomes, not just low income. We need housing for all incomes. We need housing for middle class, upper middle class, high end earners. We need it all and it all has a different cycle within the community. We target first time home buyers because again, there's, you know, despite, yes, Madera is, you know, low income majority, Madera residents are low income or fall under those brackets. But many of those folks can qualify for a home, right? They can qualify for a home. It is less expensive than renting, right? And there's all those opportunities, but they just need that hand up. The grant is definitely going to help some of those folks, you know. We're proposing again, this one word last time, it's $25,000. That's five people or five families, if you will, $5,000. You know, that can cover, that can help out a lot of people, definitely can.
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm not sure if it's Mayor Protemia or is Councilwoman Gallegos? Who's next? Councilwoman Gallegos?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. First, before COVID, I sat in a Madera High School District onboarding for our new teachers. And the Realtors offered this to new teachers that were struggling to buy a house. And like you said, outstanding bills and tuition. And from, I heard from all the young teachers was, wow, the city is willing to do this for us. And even though not everyone was going to receive it, just the idea that they were reaching out and wanting to give a hand up to these young teachers and, and wanting to come to live in Madera. And that's what we want. We want our youth to stay here. And we'd like to see our teachers that teach our kids teach in the communities that they're in. So I thank you for that and I've seen that firsthand. From my colleagues that are still a little not sure about this, we received CFR Section 520.201NA and two that explained in detail that this aligns with the CDBG federal objectives for low and moderate income. So thank you for that information. I did research that to go into that to make sure that this was going to go for first time buyers for that. I know you've done it in the past for teachers. You've done it for first time buyers that were moving into Madera. So I thank you for being a partner with us in the city and for our community. And those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protemia.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that the work that the Association of Realtors has done is commendable as far as trying to get people to be first time home buyers. My question is about, you mentioned in the application that you would have the association work with Realtors that are part of, that are members and also mortgage lenders that are members. But what about like if somebody just approached, approached the association and didn't have a Realtor that was a member? Would they still be eligible for this?
No. So we would make, we would, we would, well, within our industry, for instance, if there was another Realtor, the, the client comes first, client's interest. So let's just say, for instance, I'll, you know, just as use you as an example. Let's say you're already working with the Realtor, you're obviously a Madera resident. You want to be a first time home buyer or those kinds of things. But you're already working with the Realtor who unfortunately is in Fresno, right? Or it comes from Fresno or is not a member of our association, right? Within our industry, we can, within ourselves as agents, we can offer a referral fee and say, you know, if client's needs first, this program is strictly only available for Madera Realtors. And that just means, for instance, I live in the ranches. I'm not a city resident, but, and but I'm a paying member of the Madera Association of Realtors. That makes sense? So one could be from Fresno and pay, be a paying member here. We just want those dues here to, again, that's how we support ourselves, the association, to do all of this work. So there's ways to work around it. We've done that in the past too. By the way, thank you, Councilwoman Gallegos, because the Down Payment Assistance for Teachers, we called it the Heroes Program, was actually our second grant, again, from HAF Housing Forability Fund. That was another $25,000 that we worked with the school district to do. I wanted to make it clear, we have our basic guidelines. Again, we want to encourage membership of our own on both the Realtor end and the affiliate end. So again, that's how we support ourselves, right? Both grants from the, from before, one with county residents and one with school district, right? We made, we had those additional guidelines and willing to do the same thing here. I understood that there's a comment period, which means, tells me that the monies wouldn't be available anyways until after the comment period. So perhaps we can work directly with council on those specific guidelines until we're all satisfied. And then, you know, once approved and, or once passed the comment part, we can release it to the public and that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Montes.
So I have a couple of questions and one is for you. So Alex, in your proposal, you guys are not asking for any admin fee. So 100% of the request would go to the actual applicant or the buyer.
Correct.
That's my question.
So in the past, you know, as I, I'm a Realtor, I'm a self-employed. You know, my time is to list and sell homes and that's how I make my income. The association part is my volunteer time and it's an issue I'm passionate about. I've been doing this for almost eight, for 20, almost 20 years. You know, it's my only topic. I have nothing else to talk about, you know? But on that hand, we, the association has one employee and her job is to do everything. She's our janitor, she's, she's everything, she's the coffee maker, she's all that kind of stuff. But as volunteers know, we will, we have a committee that will be dedicated to working this, vetting the applications, making sure that they're approved, they meet all the guidelines. I would definitely be on that committee because I've wrote the ones before. We're probably going to write this one and work with staff to move forward with it. And we'll vet all of those things, you know? Unfortunately, in the past, we've had people who double applied, who were flippers that we just had to reject. It was just not meet the guidelines, you know?
Thank you. My next question is for our staff. So if the request, the $88,000 request is not fully funded, does that mean that services are going to be cut? Or does that mean that we have to find an alternate funding? So we have to find an alternate.
We would. We already modified because we requested 88. So that was for the whole complete program. So now we're just focusing the dollars that we did get earmarked for complete meals. So yes, there'd be some gaps.
But that would be something that would have to essentially be made up. Probably to this body, right? Okay.
Correct.
So that's, that's my question. Thank you. I know, probably. Gets you guys mad, but just.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank all the applicants that came and spoke before the council. Thank you for applying. Thank you for the services that you provide. Also wanted to thank the CDBG committee for their efforts in putting this, I know every year it's, it's a task for you guys. You guys don't get paid, get all your time out here and try to make this happen. A lot of times as council, we may reorganize and shift around, but we want to thank you for your efforts that you do. Thank you for everything. I did hear Hilda say, I'll make a comment that the items before us today here at C1, we are allocating only the items that have been presented to us with the exception of the Association of Realtors. Is that correct, Hilda?
That's, that's. You can allocate any of them. You have the, the request before you, the PCG recommendations. And you, as you have done in previous years, you can make, you can adjust accordingly. That goes to Mr. Montes's question. If you increase somebody's, you have to deduct it from somebody else. But they're, 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 they're in the mix, if that's your question.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So I believe that in the presentation, the full amount of 147 already included or the anticipated $25,000, is that correct, Marcella?
The 147 is the total eligible allocation. The block grant commission was only able to allocate 122,000 or something along those lines.
Okay, good. Well, with that, I will, full disclosure, I am a local lender. I work for a company that pays affiliated dues to the Madera County Association of Realtors. I am an employee. I don't have any direct benefit to that. So the question goes to you, Hilda. Is there any conflict of interest in my, in my deal here? I have, I work with some of the Realtors, but I don't work with them in specific programs that they have. Coincidentally, this may be a program that comes in the future because I am a local lender that serves local needs for borrowers. So I want to make sure that as I'm making any motions or I'm approving anything in the agenda, it doesn't affect or has any conflict of interest. And if so, then I can recuse myself as well.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. And, and please, I ask all council members, as I've done before, to ask these questions before the meeting or at the beginning of an item. I think with, with what you've said, I would have to review further. And I think for today, I would recommend you recuse yourself. And if, and we can delve into this a little further. And at the point where this matter comes for the decision, after the 30 day period, the, you may be able to participate, but I just don't have all the facts in front of me to be able to say that.
I'm pretty confident that there is no interest in my behalf or any benefit. But again, I think full disclosure, it's always best to disclose that and make sure that it doesn't seem like an act of impropriety or something. So I wanted to make sure that I disclosed that. And with that, if I need to, then I can recuse myself for this portion of it. This is the first year and I think it will come back again.
Right.
I think you can then consult with me and let me know if it, it would be good.
Thank you.
Uh, Hilda, point of clarification. Any board member, whether they belong to the CDBG committee or is a member of this council, should come to legal counsel and ask the questions prior to making comments and regarding the presentations and asking questions?
That, that's always my recommendation. It makes it easier on everybody. That way we know for sure. Cause right now it's, it's, I'm not sure because I don't have all the facts and we don't want to engage in that process during the meeting. Yes.
So prior to a meeting, if anyone has any questions, and this goes out to any board member, it's not just.
And, and yes, to committee members as well, commission members.
Committee and commission members, if they have any inkling that they might be having a conflict of interest prior to a meeting, discussing these issues, should bring it to council so that we can get clarification as to the propriety or non-propriety of them making comments and or voting on, on any particular issue.
Correct.
Am I within the scope?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I believe in the past, Mr. Mayor, I think the little council has always made that and brought that to the attention of this council. I think it's important that as members, elected officials, we also make sure that the public is aware. I think it's important that as members, elected officials, we also make sure that the public is aware and we make full disclosure of that. So, with that, Hilda, I think I'm gonna have to recuse myself now and that would be the appropriate time. So, after you make your decision, then you guys can come back and grab me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montes.
Oh, well, would it be appropriate for Councilmember Rodriguez to stay for the capital improvement portion of it and then take these items separately? Or should we try to resolve this without him?
As, as long as they're from separate line items, that should be okay.
Capital. I could do the capital.
Well, what we're doing is bouncing back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long, yeah, if you take them all to, all by each part by itself, that might be easier. That way, he doesn't have to run in and out.
Okay, so can I move that we approve the capital portion of it? Because we had, using the CBG's recommendation, is about a $2,000 short. So, I'll move that we use the, the commission's recommendations for the capital.
A second.
Funding. Capital Improvement Projects. Motion to approve the Capital Improvement Projects portion of this CDBG funding by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Motion passes. And this is tentative until our next meeting, by the way. Do we want to go back to table number one? Is there a motion for table number one?
The administrative.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Can be here for table one.
Should we do the administrative portion?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're good. You're good, well. Is there a motion to, for table number one?
I motion to approve table number one as allotted the max amount acquired by the CDBG Grant Committee.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Counsel, motion to approve table number one by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilwoman Evans. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'll recuse myself for the item on table.
Alrighty. We will now have a discussion regarding table number three. Is anyone wanting to make any adjustments on this or, and/or a motion?
So, I'll move to use the CBG's allocation, adding the $25,000 for the Realtors' proposal, making it the max allocation of 147.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Evans to approve table number three as it is. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oops, excuse me. Council, Mayor Proteme here, I'm sorry.
Okay, for the Promotora project, I think that with health being one of the most pressing issues that Madera is facing right now, we and the Madera Coalition taking the initiative of bringing together stakeholders and having the discussion as far as like where we are with health and answering a lot of our community's questions, we should promote, support helping this project where they're trying to bring health resources to make it more accessible to more members in the community. So, I don't have like a proposal of how much, but I just feel like we should support them.
Well, if, if you're gonna make that suggestion and/or a motion, you need to.
We already have a motion and a second on the floor, Mayor.
But we have, we can have discussion. We can, that's what we're having right now.
So, there's a second, first and a second motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
And this is tentative. We still are gonna have another meeting. We have, we have another meeting to.
Yeah.
To be able to go into. Let's see. I believe we're done.
Rex? Was it right?
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Go up again?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Bring back Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you very much for coming. Anyone who's leaving and remembering that, reminding you that we are still gonna have another meeting regarding CDBG funding at a later date. Yeah.
Want to take a recess right quick? Mr. Mayor? They take a five-minute recess?
Well, if you need to, you can go. We'll just continue the meeting.
We'll have a recess of three minutes.
Three minutes? Oh, really?
Thank you, Alicia. We will now move on to item C2, initiation of proceedings for the annexation of 22-502, TSM 2017-02 subdivision into Community Facilities District Number 2005-1. We'll do, I believe you have this item?
Mayor Gary Conti is presenting the item.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Gary Conti, planning manager. And I guess, Mayor, that was a mouthful, huh, as far as what we're gonna be speaking of here. And I hope to present this as a rather brief presentation to you. Give me a moment here to share my screen. Do you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Gary, excuse me, we can see your screen, but it's, it's not on presentation.
Would that be better?
No, not yet.
It is not. You're not seeing a full screen?
No, we're not, Gary.
Well, that's odd. Okay, let me just unshare here for a moment.
There you go, Gary.
Oh, I'm back? There we go.
Well, no, we changed it for a split second there. It was correct.
It was correct there for a moment. Okay, just give me a second then. Let me change my view here to get back to my. All right, let me share my screen. I've got so many different ones open at this moment in life. Okay. All right. Now, do you see my full screen?
No, we didn't, Gary.
Almost, almost there.
Almost? Huh. A baffling moment because it's showing full here. Perhaps I'm on the wrong. All right. What about now?
We cannot, Gary.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go. I'm glad. Fantastic. Appreciate that. And thank you for your indulgence. Tonight, as, as mentioned, this is the initiation proceeds for the annexation of the CVI Group Subdivision to CFD District 2005-1. The purpose of, of the, of the, of the CFD is to form basically to provide that funding gap between the revenue generated by new development and the actual cost of delivering the services. When this was originally initiated, the assessment, the annual assessment was at $311 and has since grown to nearly additional $200, now coming at $524.41 for this fiscal year. The monies that is collected from this is deposited in our general fund, since the impacts are associated are specific to our general fund. And the utilization of the tax is purposely broad such that the city may finance any services or facilities permitted to be financed underneath the Act. So, what we're bringing in for consideration here is the, as I mentioned, the CVI Groups subdivision. There is no official name to the subdivision. It is highlighted here with that large arrow. You can't miss it. It's that little piece of property located just off of Kennedy and Anandel. Give you some context about the annexation or in the CFD, there's been 13 annexations thus far. This one makes the 14th one. There have been 994 homes prior to June, June 30th of the year 2022 that contributed approximately 475 or 475K into the CFD in the last fiscal year. This project itself is going to propose to provide 19 additional single families, which would generate nearly $10,000 per year at a cost of $524.41. And here's a diagram of that particular location, Adel, Kennedy and North Lake Street is, is the location of this particular subdivision. And that's the layout that is being proposed at this point. What's before you is basically making an adopted resolution that would declare its intent to annex the territory, which is a tract number 22S02, which is also referred to as tentative subdivision map, 2017-02 subdivision to the Community Facility District 2005-1, Public Services, and to authorize a levy of special taxes and therein in setting a public hearing annexation date for number 14. That date would be, would be May the 17th of this year. And that concludes my presentation. I'm open for any questions you may have referred to this particular annexation request into the district.
Alicia, first of all, is there anyone here wanting to make a comment? I'm opening public comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor? Do you have someone, otherwise that there's a representative also online as well?
Would you like to step up to the podium?
Good evening. I just want to thank you all for your time. Mainly what you do for the community. I appreciate that. And I was pretty inspired to, you know, watch and listen tonight to see everybody, you know, how they're outreach into the community. So, greatly appreciate that. Thank you. So, yeah, I'm just hoping that you can go ahead and approve this so we can continue to go forward and go into the next phase of it.
Okay. Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? And I will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions and auditions. Or a motion, if so choose.
May I move to adopt on C2 as presented?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Montes to adopt item C2. And second by Councilwoman Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item passes. Thank you very much, Gary, for that report. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Evening. We move on to item C3, repeal of outdated section 10-3-429, 419, excuse me, of the Madera Municipal Code, telecommunications, towers, antennas and structures, OTA 2022-02. I believe Will or Gary have this item?
I have that item. Yeah. I have that item as well. I will have the following in addition to this one here that's being presented. Take a moment to share my screen. All right, is it lighting up?
Almost there. Almost there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not quite, Gary.
Not yet, Gary.
Not quite. I'm not, okay, let me. And do that one second time again and move to the other screen here. It should, it's popping up?
Not yet.
Give it just a minute, Gary.
There we go.
There we go. The answers are a little slow on the wheels, I think, tonight. It's just they're having trouble through the communication lines. Again, good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the audience, Gary Conti, Planning Manager. Before you tonight is really a cleanup. Before you tonight is really a cleanup ordinance that's that's being considered to deal with one of the orders that was recently adopted by by council. But first of all, let me just kind of explain what an ordinance tax amendment is all about and why we have to go through certain procedures. Anytime they have a proposal to amend the city's code, it requires a council action, and first of all, it requires an introduction, a first reading, and then followed by a second reading. If if approved, it would codify the our municipal code with the specific changes of being presented in your docket. If within a zoning ordinance, the section of the municipal code, it must be first considered by the planning commission, and we'd had that, and that was presented to the commission and was approved by and recommended to the city council to consider on February the twenty-first of this year. So a little background here as to why we're doing what we're doing to this evening. On October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, last year, council adopted a new ordinance for text number twenty twenty dash oh two, which basically did a wholesale upgrade or update to our telecommunications and small wires to to ensure that we were consistent. So we added a new chapter to Title X of the municipal code regulating wireless facilities on private property, as well as we adopted a small wireless facilities policy in the public rights way. The new regulations were obviously necessary because our coding was kind of a bit outdated, and we had to ensure that our telecommunications projects that were constantly presented with are going to be in essence legally and defensible in a manner consistent with federal and state case law. So what is asked, what perhaps should have been taken care of last time when it was an oversight, was actually repealing the ordinance that spoke about the towers and antennas and structures that the recent ordinance did adopt and and proceed. And so what we're doing here, and again, as I mentioned, this particular ordinance of text amendment is a housekeeping keeping ordinance resulting from the city's adoption of the previous comprehensive ordinance and the policy regarding the wireless facilities that took place in October twenty twenty-two. And this is because the municipal code ten dash three point four one nine is in essence outdated and part redundant to the chapter that was just recently adopted in October twenty-second. So what's what's recommended this evening is basically to conduct a public hearing and then weigh the full right reading and introduce the ordinance repealing section ten dash three point four one nine of Title X, Chapter three of the Madera Municipal Code to telecommunications towers and antennas and structures for the first reading by title only, and also find that the ordinance is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to secret guidelines, section fifteen, three, seven, eight, or alternatively exempt from secret under secret guidelines, section one, five, zero, six, one, subset B, subset three, which is the common sense exemption tool. With that, that concludes my presentation, and welcome to answer any questions you may have.
Did you have anything to add, Will?
No, I do not, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now open up public comment on item C three, anyone wishing to speak on item C three in the audience? If not, any written or Zoom communications there, Alicia, for item C three?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I will close public comment or bring back to my colleagues for questions and or a motion on item C three.
I move to wave for reading and introduce ordinance C three.
This, okay. Motion to approve item C three by Councilmember Montez, second by Councilmember Rodriguez, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, C three does move forward. Thank you very much, Gary and Will, for that presentation. We will now move on to item C four, the Ark Fresno Madera Counties Project General Plan Amendment. GPA twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty dash zero three, pre-zone res two thousand twenty-two dash zero two annexation ANX two zero two-two dash oh three and negative declaration ENV twenty twenty-two dash zero three. Will, do you have this item? Or Gary?
Once again, Planning Manager Gary Conti, Mayor, thank you.
Again, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Gary Conti, City Planning Manager. Take a moment, share my screens, see if this comes up rather quickly. All right, you see a full screen.
All right, there, excellent.
Third time's a charm, huh?
Right.
Okay, good evening. This is the Ark Fresno Madera Counties General Plan Amendment twenty twenty-two dash oh three, the pre-zoning twenty twenty-two dash oh two and the annexation twenty two dash oh three. So what's before you, there's this is, I'm excited actually to present this particular project, this is an annexation of the northern part of our community, and which is in essence was facilitated by an interest of the Ark of Fresno Madera Counties for a project site that is in essence two point one two acres in size that they has located just north of Ellis Ellis Street, west of Road twenty-six, and just fairly adjacent to the our high school located on Road twenty-six. We initiated the need to go ahead to to be annexed a greater area of approximately two hundred forty-two acres, which covered an area from the north limits at Martin Avenue, D Street to the eastern limits, Adele and East Ellis Street on the southern limits where the the city limits are today, and to the west, which covered Road twenty-six and the United States Bureau Reclamation Canal that is abutting the Ark Development Site that you see there in your diagram in red. So this little two point one acres project is facilitating a two hundred and forty-two acre annexation to the community. The proposal, the Ark Development Site, and its planned uses for that site requires a general plan amendment to facilitate the appropriate pre-zoning that they need to have in order to facilitate their operations on the site. This general plan amendment also includes one additional property, which is a parcel, one of the parcels that make up the school campus area that consists of the high school, middle school, and the elementary school fronting Martin, and to provide a consistency with the existing use on the site. And then the second action that's before you is a rezone, or actually a prezone of all the parcels that are going to be annexed into the city and to align accordingly with the general plan land use designations of those properties. Then finally, ultimately, there's the annexation of the two hundred forty-two acres, which would include the Ark Development Site and the combined school campus. This is a image of the proposed ARC facility that is being considered and was approved by the planning commission contingent upon the actions that are before you at this moment, which were the planning commission took their action on February twenty-first of this year. The general plan amendment is basically a request for a a medium density residential to a high density residential at at the ARC site, which is this area right here. And this is the existing medium density residential designation to the high density residential designation. And this is necessary to be consistent for the intended use of the property by that applicant. The other action of the general plan amendment is is to amend a portion of the Desmond Middle School site from open space, what you see here in in green, to reflect the consistency with the remainder of the school campuses, which is a public semi-public area, and that's reflected in blue. As you know, as a county area, this this area is completely zoned by and administered, these are the counties as far as development activities to to this date. And so the one of the actions is to go ahead and take the image that you see on the left-hand side of your screen, which represents the county zoning designations and proceed with the pre-zoning of the properties to to align with the land uses that you are are seized during plan, and that's reflected in the diagram on your right. The large blue area is the public space, basically public facilities. The area that you see in a light shaded yellow represents a pre-zone for R one, and the lighter shaded area of tan represents R two zoning, and the darker area, which was going to be represented of the ARC Development Site, will be R three. The annexation represented in this diagram here covers the two hundred forty acres as I referenced earlier, and that's outlined here in that the dark black outline, and that would encompass the two hundred forty-two acres. In total, there are fifty-two parcels that will be affected by this annexation and being brought into the community, and they include the developed properties of the high school, the middle school, as well as the elementary school that make up that entire complex along Morton Street. This project was subject, given its size and components to it, was subject to an environmental study, initial study, what led to a negative declaration being prepared. The document, the initial study, was circulated for public comment a thirty-day review public period, which commenced on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and closed on December nineteenth of twenty twenty-two. We did receive comments. None of the comments that we did receive by the agencies identified the project would result in significant effects. Staff on behalf of that is recommending that, one, you conduct a public hearing and then adopt the negative declaration as an end finding of the initial study, which is ENV twenty twenty-two dash oh three, and then move forward with approving the general plan amendment twenty twenty-two dash oh three, and secondly, go weigh the full reading and introduce the ordinance approving REZ twenty twenty-two dash oh two. Many of the official cities zoning map to pre-zone approximately two hundred forty-two acres of which referred to as the ARC annexationary, which is generally bound by Martin Avenue, as I mentioned earlier, to the north, Northeast Street to the east, Adele and Ellis Street to the south, and the Bureau of Reclamation Canal and Road twenty-six to the west. Annexation considerations on those actions will be taken at a latter point upon the second reading of our rezoning, pre-zoning request. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have pertinent to this project.
Thank you very much, Gary. Are there any members of the public wishing to step up to the mic and make comments on this item, which is item C four? Seeing none, we will move on, bring it back to, I will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions, additions, and a a motion, if maybe. Is there a motion?
You take these two at the same time, correct? I don't know if that's a question for Hilda. Yeah, all right, move to approve item C four, one and two as presented.
I second it.
Motion to approve item C four, items one and two by Councilmember Montez, second by Councilmember Evans, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All any against? Motion passes, item C four does pass. Thank you very much, Gary, for that report. We will now move on to item D petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D one is a submittal of a grant application to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District for the purchase of a new type one fire engine.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, Mayor Protamahia, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, and anybody else present today. Ralph Duran, Italian Chief for Madera City Fire, I'll be presenting in lieu of Chief McComb. He did want me to express his apologies, he wasn't able to be here today, his command team got activated, and he is currently in Tulare assisting with the floods, but he does again express his apologies and his well wishes to the council. With that,
we are to stay safe and Godspeed.
Will do, I'm in contact with them regularly.
Thank you.
With that, we are here for item D one, and what we are asking for is a resolution. The San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District recently opened up their grants for replacements of emergency vehicles, and we'd like to apply for one of those grants. The grant does require that council consent and pass a resolution authorizing us to apply for that grant. Currently, right now, there is no fiscal cost associated with it. In the future, if we were approved for a grant, which would be at a value of eighty to ninety percent of what a bid quote would be from our supplier, Rosenbauer, at that time, we'd come back to council, we'd advise the council on that. But with the amount of money that we do have currently in our accounts for our fire engine replacement program, we can cover the cost of what is it expected to be that upwards of twenty percent. We're hoping it'll be the ten percent that we'd only have to come up with, but worst case scenario would be twenty percent, and then the additional equipment. With the timeframe that it takes to build engines, a year, year and a half, we would get additional measure K funds deposited into that engine replacement program, and that would also cover and exceed the cost of equipment. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, thank you, Russ. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no public comment, Alicia, no written or Zoom comment?
No written public comment, Mayor, no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much. I will now close public comment, bring it back to my colleagues for comments and or additions.
My motion to approve the item D one, second.
Yes, sir. Did you have something? No. Being goofy. Was that second by you, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve item D one by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilwoman Gallegos, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. We will be looking for that grant shortly.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today, and I'll definitely keep you posted.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item D two, amendment to city manager at-will employment agreement. This, I believe Wendy, you have this item?
Yes, sir, can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can see it.
All right, so the item under consideration is a fourth amendment to the city manager's at-will employment agreement. Council has completed the city manager's twenty twenty-two performance review. Based on satisfactory performance, council's direction was to prepare the amendment to provide compensation elements similar to those provided to represented employees and department heads. That would include a two percent cost of living adjustment effective December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, a two percent cost of living adjustment effective June seventeen, twenty twenty-three, and a one-time lump sum payment of fifteen hundred dollars in the first paycheck of July twenty twenty-three. This chart, I know it's probably a little small on the screen, it was also included in the staff report if anyone needs to zoom in on the PDF, illustrates the annual pay equivalent for the assigned pay range for city manager. So council's not changing the assigned pay range, this chart demonstrates the application of the two percent COLA. The first line is the current pay rate for the city manager, this pay range has not been changed since two thousand seventeen, so since before your current city manager was here, that is the the pay range the position has been at. The twelve thirty-one twenty-two would be the first COLA, and the six seventeen twenty twenty-three would be the second COLA. So the fiscal impact for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the increase to base pay is just a little over two thousand dollars. The following fiscal year, the additional increase would be four thousand, which, when you take the first increase and then the second, you get your compounded number, it's about eight thousand in the second fiscal year. The one-time lump sum payment of fifteen hundred dollars will be handled the same as we are doing for all other employees, which is to designate and classify reserves from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the signed classification to pay for that. And that occurs in July twenty twenty-three, which is your next fiscal year, and we take care of that appropriation for everything due to your full-time employees when we draft that budget. All right, so I'm done with my part of the presentation, there is an announcement that the mayor must read. I don't know if you want me to leave it on the screen, sir, or if you have it otherwise in front of you.
You can have it on the screen, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, pursuant to government code five four nine five three C three, prior to taking action on this item, the council must publicly announce a Prior to taking action on this item, the council must publicly announce a summary of the action being considered. If approved, the proposed amendment to the city managed employment agreement will modify the existing agreement as follows. The city manager's salary will be increased by a two percent cost of living increase, COLA, effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and a two percent COLA effective June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. The city manager will receive a one-time lump sum payment of fifteen hundred dollars the first paycheck in July two thousand twenty-three. If the foregoing is approved, the council will consider revisions to the city of Madera full-time salary schedule at its next meeting. We will now open up public comment on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on item D two, please step forward from the public. Seeing, that's funny, chief. Seeing no public comment, is there any written or Zoom comments, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I will now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions, answers, et cetera. Councilmember Montes.
So thank you for that presentation, Wendy. And being on the ad hoc, I just wanted to add this pretty much mirrors exactly what all the other bargaining units receive. Only difference here is that the manager's contract is not extended in any time duration like the general bargain units. I think they have a three-year contract. So for the city manager, he would have to come back to his body every year. But that's the only difference. And that's all I wanted to add.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
I still move to approve D two as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve item D two by Councilwoman Evans, Gallegos, excuse me, and second by Councilmember Viegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. We will now move on to item D three, approval of additional national opioid settlements with Tiva, Allegra, Walmart, Walgreens, and CVS. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. If you can just bear with me while I close some windows out here. So prior to starting this item, I simply want to thank council for the previous item. Because, sorry, Hilda, I'm sure I shouldn't say this, but I'm humbled and I'm grateful for council support. So with that being said, the item before council this evening is a request to to join in a settlement agreement for the opioid pandemic. Council may recall that a couple of years ago, city staff brought an item before council for a different settlement agreement. That settlement agreement resulted in the city receiving roughly twenty-nine thousand dollars two years ago and approximately forty thousand dollars in in the current fiscal year. As the community is very well aware, this is a nominal, and this is a nominal amount of money for the negative impacts opioids has had on our community, on first responders, specifically our paramedics, our local healthcare system, our firefighters, and our police officers who struggle with opioids, not themselves, but with the impacts of the opioid pandemic. It's, I'm not, it's extremely difficult to try to quantify that. I can assure you, though, that the city spends considerably more responding to 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 those individuals that need assistance. The current settlement agreement is with a couple of different firms. It's Teva, Allegra, Walmart, Walgreens, and CVS. This this agreement is, I'm not going to say it's identical, but it's very comparable to the agreement from twenty twenty-one. If if council moves forward with this, we would sign the agreement tomorrow morning, and we would move it forward. While the amount of funding that we would receive directly is not directly spelled out, we crunched some numbers trying to come up with a ballpark figure, and it looks like approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars. Again, a drop in the bucket, but it's better than no dollars. Overall, this agreement would provide local jurisdictions or California up to one point eight billion dollars, and it is based on population. And so again, the city's population would roughly be be seventy thousand dollars. Again, we're hopeful that it's more. However, if you review the couple thousand pages, it's pretty difficult to decipher the exact dollar amount, and some of it's predicated on how many agencies or how many local jurisdictions join in on the settlement agreement. And some of the use for money is spelled out on the overhead here. With that being said, if the city council elects not to sign on this evening, and obviously that's council's prerogative, the money would still come to the local government, but they would be funneled through Madera County, and then Madera County would have use for it. I'm sure they can have, and that they could find some really good uses for that money. However, the request this evening is that council authorize staff to sign onto the other agreement, and then those funds would come directly to the city. And then we in turn would funnel those funds to the police department. And there are very strict reporting requirements. They're they're very thorough, and they're time consuming. I'll add that. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation, and staff's recommendation this evening is that the city participate in the settlement agreement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Item D three, seeing none, any written or Zoom?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you, Alicia. Now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions or a motion on item D three. Anyone?
A motion to approve item D three.
Second. Motion to approve item D three by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Montes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Arnoldo.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will now move on to item E, administrative reports. Item E one is an informational report on the city's cannabis program. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This item is being presented for to council tonight as an informational item. That's a request of council at the last meeting. As the council and the community are aware, we have been in the midst of reviewing applications for cannabis applications. This was a multi-part process that that we started, it was a couple of years ago now. The city did receive twenty-six standard retail applications and two social equity applications. All all applications were scored by HDL, and all applicants, with the exception of wine, received a minimum or the minimum of ninety percent or higher. It should be noted that both social equity applications received a score higher than ninety percent. Out of the eighteen standard applications or of the twenty, twenty-six standard applications, eight, eighteen of them were selected to move forward to to round three. During the process, we applicants that were not selected did have an opportunity to file an appeal. That appeal was roughly sixty-one hundred dollars, and the city did receive three timely appeals. We have been working with our city attorney's office on going through those appeals. Once once those appeals are are processed, at that point, city staff will 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 schedule the community meetings for the remaining applicants. Those community meetings will be held in a public place. The exact location has not been determined. It very well could happen here at City Hall or at the Pan American Center or at the Well Center. We want to provide an open forum. We want to be very transparent with our community, and we want to be sure that community members have a good understanding and have an opportunity to comment on potential retail stores in their neighborhoods. The, I'll call it the holdup, even though that's a strong phrase, is that we're still going through the process of those three appellants. And that that's currently where we're at. It's been a long drawn out process. City staff and our city attorney's office is working diligently as late as late, late last night. I signed a couple of documents on behalf of the city. So I think we're a step closer, but but there there is one minor detail that we're still working through. Once that process is complete, and then we can provide the notification. The challenge is we cannot provide a notification now because we do have to allow those three applicants the opportunity to exhaust their administrative remedies. If you move forward, that that could potentially either lead to litigation or it can delay further steps down the road, and we definitely don't want to do that. And at the same time, we want to be fair to all applicants in the process. So in terms of the community meeting, once, once we elect to have the community meetings, once we've processed the three appeals, all property owners within three hundred feet will be receiving a public notification. We do have standards for the timing of that. If memory serves me, I can't recall if it's a ten-day notice. That's that's your typical standard public noticing requirement by by state planning law. We will have have those meetings. Subsequent to those meetings, those applicants, those applications will come before the city council for final action. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. Again, we we are at the tail tail end of 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 reviewing and considering the three appellants. And so with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Arnoldo. Are there any members of the public wishing to ask questions regarding cannabis? Are there any written or Zoom comments, Alicia?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I will now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the the report. However, I I don't see a timeline, and I know that with the appeals process that could take some time. Do we have an estimated timeline of when we can particularly maybe start seeing phase four or maybe move on to phase three, something like that? I mean, I just kind of want to get something out if if there's anything that you can provide.
Do you mind if I interrupt? I believe Hilda wants to say something.
With respect to that question, and Mr. Rodriguez's, City Manager Rodriguez's comment about being at the tail end. Again, it has to do, right now, it has had to do with the appeals. And in my view, by next week, by within one week, we should know, and we should be able to proceed to the next step. And there may be, we're, 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 I don't want to, I can't get into much detail because this is litigation. But I can say we're working on resolving most of the appeals, and if there is one, we will let that one take its course, but we will still proceed with the next phase.
So can we safely say that we can anticipate maybe moving into phase three by the end of April, early May?
From my perspective, yes, but I'll defer to Mr. Rodriguez, City Manager Rodriguez.
I'm going to say yes, as long as we finalize it within probably the next week, because we do have to establish a location. And at the same time, we want to be sure that the neighborhood and the community and the the applicants have ample opportunity to prepare for the community meeting. And so we definitely want to give them ample time, and that's going to be a minimum of ten days, okay, notice. And so as soon as we can do that, and then we also want to look at the calendar because we want to be considerate of the community. We don't want to schedule a meeting on a Monday night or a Friday night. You typically want to do it during the week. So so long we can finalize the the appeals, which, again, I think we're very close. We're going to schedule those meetings in I'll say shortly thereafter, but really it's immediately thereafter. And if that can happen in April, that would be awesome, and that would be really good.
Thank you for elaborating on that, Hilda, and thank you, Arnoldo.
Mayor Protem Mahia.
Thank you. My question is also related to the timeline. With regard to the community meeting, is there like a rough estimate of when that would be set for?
Probably the end of April, assuming we can get notification or we we'd resolve the outstanding issues with the appellants. If we can do that, I'd like to think the end of April, but we want to take a look at a calendar as well to make sure that we're giving everyone ample opportunity. We we want to be highly sensitive to the community's needs, and we want to shortchange the community.
And then you did mention that there would be a notice mailed out to residents. But what about business owners specifically in the downtown area?
So it's it's going to be everyone within three hundred feet of a subject site. So downtown city block in Madera, there are four hundred foot blocks in Madera, so that kind of gives you some pretty good context. It's, so if you're in downtown, it's from C to D street is four hundred feet. So if you have one within three hundred feet, you would be notified. With that being said, anyone can attend a meeting, not simply those that receive a notice, or any community member. They don't even have to be a city resident, can attend a meeting and provide public comment or testimony, but the notices themselves are three hundred feet.
Okay. And then if everybody can attend the meeting, are we considering other avenues for communication like social media, the website, or any other way to communicate this to everyone?
Yes, come, we will do all of the above.
And in Spanish?
We had not planned in Spanish, but we can definitely make that happen.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor. You kind of answered my questions with Councilwoman Rodriguez and Mayor Protem Mahia. One thing I'm just we want to give the cannabis companies ample time to get ready, but they've been, they've been holding facilities for over two plus years. I think they're ready to go. So when we are through our other phase and we're ready to run with our community meetings, I think they're ready. I've just, I hear that other cities are up and running, and here Madera is is two plus years, and we haven't started yet. And I thank those companies for kind of hanging in with us, and and I know it's not easy paying rent for a building that's just sitting. So and that would, once these permits are assigned, it would alleviate some of this inventory that's being held up in the city that could be used for other agencies that want to come in. So I think we'll be ready to go. Thank you.
I believe Fresno, it took seven years. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Agos, thank you for pointing that out. I will say that Arnoldo, I know you use the word shortchange, and I'm not going to use that against that, but you, but it's very important that we that we note that the people did approve this back in when it was approved through the voters, right? They approved it because they want to see this happen. So when they they're shortchanged, I think they're being shortchanged the longer we wait for this. And this is not necessarily pressure on you or the legal team or what have you, but I think we need to try to get a move on because, as Councilmember Gallegos pointed out, I mean, we're starting to see this evolve in different areas, and yet Madera is still on the back end. And I mean, I'll I'll come back and say, you know, maybe maybe the original suggestion that was brought by by staff may have been a lot easier process. Obviously, we're here, we're paying the price, but we would like to see this move forward. And and again, not to shortchange the 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 people of Madera, because I think they want to see this and tax revenues coming into our coffers as well. And that's.
Thank you very much, Arnoldo. Thank you very much for that report. We will now move on to item E two, rental housing inspection program update. Claudia, do you have this report?
Yes, she does. I'd like to introduce her.
Go ahead, chief.
Give me some mic time. You do that all the time. So good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council. Thank you for having us here. We're here before you tonight at your request. This is an informational report on the rental housing inspection program, and no action will need to be taken. Of course, like I always do, we're going to have the expert, one of the experts in the room tonight present this, and it's Claudia Mendoza. She's our supervisor of code enforcement. She does an outstanding job, and she's a very wealth of knowledge. So with that, I'll turn that over to her.
What a great presentation. That was a great introduction, by the way.
Don't get him started.
Good evening, council members, mayor and mayor pro tem. I'm just going to get this started.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. Not at all. Not at all. Thank you. Okay, so I'm here to present a rental housing inspection program update. So what is rental housing inspection program? In June twenty seventeen, the city council adopted the new rental housing inspection ordinance with the purpose to address the issue of substandard rental properties. This authorized the city to proactively conduct periodic inspections of residential rental properties to ensure compliance with all applicable building, housing, health, and safety codes and ordinances. So the program requirements are, all rental housing properties in the city are to be registered. Some exemptions do apply, and we'll get into that a little bit later. Rentals are to be inspected by code enforcement every three years. Rental properties are to meet the minimum standards established by the Health and Safety Code, Building Code, and the Madera Municipal Code. There are cost recovery fees that are assessed. We have a self certification program, and this is mostly aimed at um multifamily housing apartment complexes. Uh, owners can participate, um, but they have to be in compliance with the requirements of the self certification form. If they're not in compliance, they have to make repairs to the rental units necessary to obtain compliance. And the self certification form shall be submitted to code enforcement in order to be eligible to participate. And after we receive it and uh verify the form, we will do an inspection, doing a random sample of ten percent of the rental housing units. Also note, uh, we have not received any applications for the self certification program. Some of the exceptions include uh units that are subject to routine periodic inspections by other government agencies such as HUD, Housing Authority. Rental units that are inspected at least once every three years to address any substandard building violations. Any um homes within the past ten years have, that have been issued a certificate of occupancy or passed a final inspection by the city. Currently, the city has five hundred and sixty-nine rental properties that are registered as exempt. So this is our process. Uh, we research, we identify all residential rentals. We do this by uh doing a query in our property data system that we use to find out who property owners are. Uh, the program is called RealQuest. We also look at Munis to uh, you know, identify any properties that may be needing to be registered that are not. Uh, once we identify those properties, we notify the property owner to to register. So we typically give them about thirty days to um to get that registered. There is no cost to register. Uh, if they do not, there is a fee, a delinquency fee that goes with that. Once the registration is received, uh, we do a random selection, uh, give a thirty day inspection notification. And uh, we conduct the inspection, so uh, usually with the notification, I'll go back. We, it, we give a checklist, and we give a consent to the property owner for the tenant. Somebody needs to be there in order for us to conduct this inspection. So um, we let them know thirty days ahead of time, so this allows them to prepare for us. And uh, so like I said, we conducted an inspection. If they pass, we discharge for the, the time that we're there. If they fail, um, there's a notice of violation that's issued. Uh, there's time included in, in that as well. If they still do not pass, um, after forty-five days, there will be citations. We don't want that to happen. And uh, there's also recovery costs included. We do bill the property owners for any inspection costs, any um violations, citations. So these are the program fees. The program fees are uh mandated by the master fee schedule. So there is no cost for the registration. The delinquency fee, if they do not register their property, is six hundred and fifty dollars, which is pretty steep. And then the inspection fee is sixty dollars an hour, which comes out to a dollar a minute. And administrative citations you see below. So here's our statistics for the last twenty-four months. So um items worth noting, the numbers are less than expected, but this is due to the city not conducting proactive inspections from February twenty twenty through uh June twenty twenty-one due to COVID. We have made some attempts after June twenty twenty-one to conduct inspections, but again, this was stalled due to owners, tenants refusing or rescheduling due to illness or COVID concerns. In June twenty twenty-two, we started slowly resuming rental housing inspections. And again, slowed in the winter months with the COVID and flu outbreaks, with most of the community returning to normal, we feel that these numbers will go up. So here's uh some pictures of inspections that we conducted. Um, this inspection failed. They had some issues with the ceiling, inadequate uh ceiling repairs, uh inadequate electrical, the the water heater is not strapped. This is a very common one. Uh, no smoke detector. It's either been removed. There's no batteries. This is a leak under a kitchen sink. And you can see that there's some sort of growth going on there as well. This is also a very common violation. Uh, no electrical plates on outlets or light switches. This is a broken window. It is unable to move up and down or close properly. This is a leaking ceiling and roof. So that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Claudia. Uh, I will now open public comment for anyone wishing to speak or uh ask questions regarding item E two. Is there any Zoom or written comments, Alicia, on items E two?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions and a motion. This is information. Well, it's informational, uh, excuse me, yeah. Any questions from my colleagues, uh, Councilmember Montes?
Make a motion if you guys want me to, but um, no, thank you for that presentation, but and thank you for the work that you guys do. Um, I do have a little bit of knowledge of this program, so I'm going to ask some questions that probably weren't covered uh in the presentation. So how many eligible units do we have or properties do we have um that will qualify for the rental proactive inspection program?
Well,
In the city.
We just uh did a uh a query of uh potential properties that we can maybe go after for registration. So there, it looks like there's about five thousand two hundred properties that are not owner occupied. So we're going to look at them and see, okay, have they registered already? If they're not registered, get them registered. So um with the property sales and, and turnover changing constantly, it's something we always have to constantly monitor. But as of right now, um, there's, could be approximately five thousand two hundred.
So that's, that's total. So we have three thousand three, uh, three hundred and eight registered, so that'd be the difference, right? Two thousand that you'd be potentially looking at and rolling into the program. Okay. And um, so I guess my question is, so the two years that we have statistics for, we have ninety-two complete inspections, so that, is that units or is that properties?
Units and properties, so it, it would indicate if we went to a multifamily housing unit, it could be, we inspected each unit, so it would include those as well.
It would include all the units that would be eligible for.
Yes.
And correct, and, and remind me, is that, that's a tier as a percentage that we, that we inspect, or is it all units?
Um, if they are enrolled in the self certification program, it would be, until they enroll in that, it would be all units included.
And then uh, another program initially was tiered where um we were going to start with the older um housing stock. Has that um period elapsed enough to where all units are eligible now? So there's.
Um, we are at pre nineteen ninety. Um, in June, we will be doing pre nineteen ninety. So we're setting our notifications out now for those inspections. In twenty twenty-nine, I believe is, is when we will be able to do all rental units.
Okay, um, so I'm just asking a question. So at the pace that we're at, ninety-two complete in the two-year period, um, would we be able to get to all the, even the registered three thousand three hundred and eight units? Would we be able to complete um inspections on all those at that pace?
Well, probably not, but I mean, they're registered, but they, it could be a property that's registered and they are built in two thousand or something like that. So I don't have it broken down by um how many are registered and are eligible for inspection at this time. I can get to that information at another time, but um.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I'm just, I'm asking because I want to make sure that um the pictures that you showed us, it shows that we are finding some of these issues, right?
Yes.
And these are people that have registered on there.
Yes.
I mean, we might have, you know, asked them to register, but they did register. We scheduled thirty days in advance that we were going to go out there. Then we showed up and we found some of those deficiencies, so they, I mean, it's kind of hard to um I don't want to say accept, but it's kind of hard to believe that they knew we're coming, and they still had some of those deficiencies. And, and you know, I do this in, in Fresno, so um, we find a lot of these um conditions. So I, I don't know, I just want to make sure that the program is running to, so that it would actually complete, you know, the three-year cycle. I know, and, 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 you know, I don't know what that would take, right? I mean, you guys are the experts here. So I mean, is that something that you can come back or at least give to us to say, okay, this is what it would take to, for the program to run um at an optimum level? So we're actually um going through cycling through in a three-year period for what's eligible. And again, it's not going to be that three thousand, right? It's going to be everything older than nineteen ninety, so it could be significantly less than that. I just want to make sure that we're, we're hitting those, you know, some of those benchmarks.
Of course.
So that we can catch a lot of these. And again, the older units are, they tend to, not, not always, but they tend to have a little more problems, just because your, your maintenance is going to be higher. I mean, I don't know if you knew that emotion, but if you can get that information, then maybe we can continue this, this conversation at a later time.
Any further uh questions? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just want to say uh, thank you, Claudia. Uh, thank you again, Chief, for that introduction. Councilmember uh, Montes, thank you. I think everything that you touched on is exactly what I wanted to bring up, and you said it best. When this program came about, you know, obviously, some of us had to really stick our neck out, and uh earlier there was a group of people here that uh were uh not the, they were opponents of them uh of the deal, and obviously, for, for a good reason. I think our initial um, um idea was to make sure that we eliminate blight, we eliminate slums. And, you know, over the last two years, we've seen um a, an increase in rents, but yet you can see pictures that still show that there's deficiencies in homes. So I think it should go hand in hand, right? I mean, if we're going to require, and, and I, and I, I can't say how much you're going to charge and rent and what have you, that's a business decision, but at least, you know, I, I would think that you'd want to bring those units to par. And if you're still seeing subpar housing out there, I mean, obviously, that's, that's not, that's not what we uh, what we wanted, and that's why this, this came about. It wasn't really to try to make a profit or try to make money, but rather eliminate what we said we're going to do, which was blight and slums. And, and be able to bring our community up, because in the long run, more people want to live in our community. That increases our tax base, and it increases our, 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 um disposable income per family that helps us to generate more sales tax, more revenue for the city. So all of that that goes connected, but again, I think uh what you said there, um, Councilmember Montes, thank you for bringing that up. I hope that uh, uh, we, we hope to see a report in the future, and I'm sure Chief is going to comment on that.
So, yeah, if I can, the, the two-year um snapshot that we took, I, we don't hold those numbers to be a true, correct gauge of the program because of COVID. We shut it completely down, the program, one for the safety of our employees and the other for the public. That's why I say going forward, we get the, the program up and cranked in the way that we believe it should be running. I believe at the end of the year, we have a full year, we can gauge where we're at and if we're going to meet those or not. So I, I need some time where we're up and running full steam with all my uh code people out there doing these inspections. That's why I kind of say um, we were still doing kind of hit and miss stuff during COVID, but it shut us completely down. So, so I couldn't say use these numbers to gauge what the program looks like going forward. I, I need a clean year. We need a clean year, and that's what we're looking for uh going forward. And then we can come before you and say, hey, based on this, and, and this is putting all complete effort, and, and there were no cancellations, and people weren't scared, then we can gauge the numbers going forward.
And I think that's fair, Chief. I think uh, again, you, you touched on the COVID uh pandemic, and I, I don't, I don't, I didn't see how people could especially uh put themselves at risk. I'm not sure. You know, those are some of the concerns, not only with the tenants themselves, but also with the code enforcement officers. So um, I certainly agree that there was a period that the that lapsed, that maybe we didn't get data. So I, I can certainly agree to to have you collect that and maybe bring that back. I'm not sure if a year is appropriate or not, but uh, I, I would certainly uh recommend the same.
But yeah, we need, we need a, a time to do the program. Um, because it's, yeah, give me three years. I'll do it three. Actually, three and a half, and yeah, you won't see me. You won't see me, but you'll see somebody. No, but, but yeah, I, we need some time to actually gauge, and we, we can set where the bar needs to be. Now, with that said, though, that has nothing to do, the, the rental housing has nothing to do with when we get complaints from citizens. Tenants, we immediately go out there and address those for, for those reasons. And less than um, um attentive uh homeowners that are renting their property, we address those right away because nobody should live in the conditions that we're shown. And, and so that's a completely different thing. Uh, those are addressed immediately. We're on those right away. But going forward with the, the rental inspection, yeah, we're just asking, give us some time, some clean time, and, and we'll show you some numbers, and that way we can gauge and go forward and give you what we think the program can produce. Also, we're going to have to uh set up a time and run some stuff by Hilda too, because there's some things that we would like addressed uh or maybe confirm uh with, with some of the rates.
Oh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Montes?
So uh, thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for bringing that up to um, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez. So I know it's not about making money, but we do want to make sure that the program itself is staying, right? And so having a true, true cost recovery um is going to be beneficial, and I just see that sixty dollar cost recovery for their time, and you know, I, again, I work in Fresno, and I think we're, we're uh north of two hundred dollars an hour, right? So I'm, I'm again, I'm not saying that it's about making money, but we want to, want it to be uh true cost recovery. And again, the purpose of the program is not to catch or bust anybody. And in my experience, you know, when you tell people like, hey, you got to register your property because we're going to come inspect. Hey, we're going to go inspect. A lot of times we do find that people do make those corrections preemptively, because they know, and, and giving them the the checklist, this is what I'm going to check for. So have this corrected, right? We want the, the property to be above health and safety minimum standards. And so again, not trying to bust people, catch people, make money, but we want to make sure we safeguard um the rental housing stock. So if we can include that, um, and I don't know if, if quarterly, maybe we can come back in three months and just see like what the progress is. I, I mean, because we just want to, want to know and kind of look and see. I don't know if, if that's something that could, could be done. I don't know, eighteen, eighteen months is kind of a, a long time. And again, it's not to say, hey, you guys are doing something wrong, just so we can, so we can monitor the program. I don't know if that's something that we can do, but I mean, we can, we can bring that back. We can ask for that uh at a later time, when, when uh, after Hilda answers all the questions and fixes everything that I didn't.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And part of uh the timeframe probably would be because we do have um an animal control issue where we took our code enforcement officers out and put them into animal control until we can do a hire. And so the numbers for our code enforcement officers have gone down. a hire. And so the numbers for our code enforcement officers have gone down in in that aspect. So we have to look at all the whole picture and the equation of a timeframe when you don't have full capacity of staff. So um.
Yeah, if if, yeah, if I I do. So um, we have two part time uh code people. We lost both those positions. Um, they've they've gone to greener pastures. They decided to retire again for the second time. So we're trying to fill those. We finally got up to speed fill it, but then the problem, we've lost both animal control officers. Um, one has gone to Clovis, one went to the county. So essentially, we have no code. So we had to pull um officer Mayorga, who was a code enforcement officer to train um the part time code enforcement officer to work animal control so we can continue that service. Um, so yeah, we're what like I said, Claudia is doing a bang up job. It's it's not just code, but it's also employee, you know, trying to get that filled too. Um, and and, you know, it's kind of like a bubble gum and duct tape, but we're getting it done. And and that's why I say if three months, I I can tell you um that we won't even have people trained.
Um, that's fair.
You know, um. Well, of course, you know, uh, like I said, we're taking the part time. Now, we are uh HR and 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 the city manager, they're helping us. We have open recruitments. We're we're trying to get those people in place. But as you know, it takes a while to train and get those going, but.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
So chief, would a year be then appropriate? I you said a year would be appropriate for us to get uh gather some numbers by that time, maybe code enforcement officers are trained and you've got some better numbers to bring back. Is that what your suggestion?
So my my suggestion, uh, and again, it's just a suggestion for it with me. I like a true gauge. I like to come before you and say uh this is what the stats show. And this is what we're gonna project going forward. So I need I need some time. Plus, also, we need to address the issue um like Claudia alluded to, um, we're we're hamstrung in in my opinion with we're we're charging a dollar an hour. And
A dollar a minute.
A dollar a minute. I'm sorry, a dollar a minute. That's even better. Anyway. Um, so our officers go in and they search him. But well, if everything's up to code, everything looks good, it's fifteen minutes. Okay, so fifteen, it's fifteen dollars off an inspection. So and and that's that's what we're kind of hamstrung with. That's why I have to go before Hilda and 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 talk with her and get an opinion to see if she agrees or or not with them.
And Steve can tell you the fifteen minutes for the inspection, but they still have to go back and write the report. There's still time on top of that. So
Mm hmm.
it's less than a dollar a minute if you put all that in the equation.
Yeah. So so I I think that that that's a good suggestion to bring back. Um, but more importantly, I think the proactive approach that uh councilman Montes talked about earlier is making sure that a lot of these folks that are not registered notices are sent out so that they know that, hey, this is what is gonna take place. This is a fee schedule. I don't think anybody at the end of the day really wants to be visited if if they see themselves falling into that category. So I think uh a simple uh uh request, and I'm sure you've done this, um, and 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 with the previous uh um tenants, or I'm sorry landlords, but I think it really gives us that proactive approach of saying here's what we have, here's what you need to do, register if you haven't, and here's what may happen. These are the costs. I think with that, I think a lot of folks do kind of open their eyes and say, well, if I don't, this can be the cost. If there is discussion of increasing that, then obviously, I think it would really behoove them to try to jump on that quicker because I think that cost per minute can certainly go up.
Yeah, and and like the registration, so we'll send out notices. Um, and and if we find that they're not, then we have to serve with NOB and give them thirty days. And when they get that, they're in compliance. So that registrar or the late non-registration fee, we don't see any of that either.
Got it. Something to consider. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much for that report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say there is a lot of variables out there that we're not bringing to the equation. And I think this is why I think after the timeframe has passed, it's good for us to come back, reconvene on this and maybe start making some adjustments if we if we have to. And I think Hilda can help us with that as well.
Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you.
We will now move on to item three, emergency repairs to Avenue thirteen sewer trunk main at Granada Drive update number five, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, mayor. I think this one's gonna be deputy city engineer Ellen Bitter.
Yes, thank you, uh, city manager. Uh, I am going to share my screen. So, oh, excuse me, there we are. Hopefully, you can see that summary update number five.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, mayor. I want to start with that and members of the council. It's nice to be reporting uh progress instead of disasters. We're we're continuing to make progress out at our um emergency repairs. Um, this is our um first slide. We always present kind of a reminder of where we started back on January second. And then uh from there, Boyd Johnston uh joined our team to help make the repairs to um the initial collapse and the further damage that occurred because of the continuation of this wet winter that we've had. So I've modified our our overview um to reflect where we are today. Uh, the green lines are the uh improved underground utilities, the the pipelines and the manhole structures. And then the orange represents um kind of the fallout, if you will, of all of the excavations that took place and damage to the roadway. And so um the orange area is all of the paving restoration. And um as of today, the uh all the pavement is in. So we are at ground level. At this time, we as we near completion, we have uh replaced the failed forty two inch pipeline. We've replaced the failed pipeline under the railroad. We replaced a hundred fifty feet of the failing twenty seven inch pipe that headed to the east in Pecan with a new pipeline. And that was necessary for the bypass pumping operations and um actually to be able to put the system back in operation. Otherwise, I think we would have lost the rest of that line as well. Uh, we finished five manhole structures, including a protective coating, so they should last forever. Uh, we have removed all the shields, which is the shoring and protection uh materials from the site. We backfilled all the excavations. Um, you know, we had a very wet March and we encountered a lot of wet material in the subgrade uh below the paving of the all of that orange area that I showed. And so um that did require overexcavating uh almost two feet down, bringing in additional base rock, and we placed um uh a geotextile grid. And what that does is that kind of stabilized the base rock between two layers of base rock so that um it kept the material stable, running the heavy equipment over it. And we were able to continue to backfill it with the base rock and um place our um pavement layers on there. This picture I took this morning, um, it is the original collapse area. Um, the uh the little roller, that a piece of equipment that's there is where the um PG knee pole used to be. And then that that one is now gone. And and the two new poles you see are their replacement. Uh, we are gonna put some delineators up uh as the the original PG knee pole somewhat acted as a delineator with its reflective markers. So we want to people to be able to see that. Um, the there's a square in the middle of the photo. That is uh one of the manholes. And this is what we call, we adjust them to grade. So we are going to put grade rings on and we bring that round cover up to the pavement surface, and then we pour a concrete collar around it. And that's what they were doing today. Uh, this one barricade is also sitting inside of um, there's a manhole cover there that needs to be raised to grade. Uh, the one thing that is missing, you'll see the railroad um signal gate arm. There there's one here and one over here. They're coming in next week to put that in. Um, I think it was next Tuesday of what is what they have committed to. So that will be the final piece that the railroad needs to complete. Um, and then we will be um, you'll see some temporary striping out there. It's 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 tape um and for the stop bars and it's those floppy, we call them floppies. It's those little taped down um lane markers. Um, that's just temporary for a few days until the final striping comes in, which is next week. So this is a list of some of these activities. I mentioned bringing in the manhole covers and also water valves. Same thing, we got to bring them up to the street grade. Um, they're going to do a fog seal, which is a way to preserve the new asphalt. Um, and that's coming in on Friday. And then uh they continue to clean up and clear the site. Uh, I mentioned the Union Pacific Railroad is gonna be here next week, I on Tuesday, the eleventh. That's what they've said. And uh we should have the final striping by Friday, April fourteenth. Um, I did want to point out that um, you know, Granada Drive did take a beating in the project. Um, however, it wasn't directly related to the sewer collapse. I it is and it isn't. If you go back, look at Google photos, there's some damage. Um, so to keep it clean with our FEMA claims, we have decided to kind of live with this condition and will add that piece to a CIP project for paving restoration. Um, net probably coming up in this year. Um, the changes, the the cost, you know, we encountered additional time and and materials associated with the wet subgrade. Um, so now my my total cap is moved up to two point seven million. And um I also wanted to note that I will be bringing a more formal report, hopefully the next meeting with a budget amendment. Um, bringing some funds forward from next year that were allocated to the Avenue thirteen project, bringing them forward so we can pay the bills and then um keep marching forward on the true project, which is lining that pipeline out to the plant. So that again, there's no action required tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this for either Zoom or written form?
We have none, mayor.
And anyone here in the uh wishing to come up to the podium? All right, so we will close uh public comment on this, bring it back to council for questions. Anyone wanna pretty much uh? Councilwoman Gallegos?
Thank you, mayor. Um, first off, uh, I'm so excited. The community is gonna be so happy that this road will be opening pretty soon. Um, if my colleagues would entertain um our city clerk sending out a thank you note to um all the construction companies and the pumping company. I mean, I know they they did it and they got paid for it. But man, they really acted fast for us. They were there. Um, and behalf of the council and the mayor, a thank you to the engineering and wastewater treatment being out there all night, making sure that um that it when the um sewer came up that our pumps were running and when the sewer went down, they would stop the pumps. So um just if we could do a shout out to them and thank them um on behalf of all of us for all of that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for that report. Um, we will now move on to item F. Councilmember reports announcements and future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. Councilmember Gallegos?
Oh, thank you, mayor. Just a few things real fast. Um, a shout out to PD and Parks and Rec, Joe. Uh, Dino, what an awesome Easter egg hunt for this community on Saturday. And thank our vendors and our partners that were out there. It was a full spread on that ball field. It was awesome. And and bubbles and the Easter bunny out there. Um, a thank you to our planning commissioners. We had four go to uh the Lega Cities uh conference. So woo hoo. That was pretty exciting. We had our new planning commissioners go out to that to get knowledge to bring back to that board. Um, I just want to thank the city manager and staff. I was on a meeting um with the county and as a resident, I couldn't see the zooming. So thank you to make sure that our residents can see the zoom at all times because it was really hard to follow without being able to see what they were presenting. So I thank you for that. If you're around town and you see purple ribbons around the trees and around signs, that's to remind you about Relay for Lifecoming. And just if you're out and about, let your residents know to keep their eyes on our parks. We've had a lot of things happen out there with the barbecues or the horseshoe pit at Rotary. Um, every park is being affected. So we can have some more eyes out there helping our PD, making sure that um they're safe. And if anything needs to be repaired, to let us know. That's it, mayor. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's uh tough to follow that. So I'm just gonna go ahead and uh that's all my comments. Have a good night.
Ditto, right? Um, uh, councilmember Montes? Uh, yeah, just thank you to staff and and chief. I hope you're not taking, you know, the the questions in the comments as like doing anybody doing a bad job. I just wanna look at what's going on.
He stepped, he stepped right for a minute.
But uh no, there's there's actually a lot of stuff that happened um since our last meeting. So uh shout out to the American Little League for inviting us. They did make me run uh that morning. So, you know, I I don't know if I liked that part, but the rest of it was good. Community cleanup date, Parks and Rec, thank you for coordinating that. We got to do uh downtown um, which is fun. Got to take the family out there, uh, clean up uh the city. Um, also the Stop the Hate Workshop, uh, Billy Councilmember Mejia. Um, and again, Parks and Recreation, you know, great event, good shout out um to you guys in POA as well, uh, Easter egg hunt. That was fun. Um, I did want to ask for an update. Uh, so I, on our last uh self-help enterprise board meeting, um, we talked about the risk of low income housing becoming market rate because of syndications expiring and and whatnot. And I just wanted to see if we can get an update on our PL- PLHA activities. Um, so I know um we did receive an allocation and we actually made a plan for that. Uh, but I just want to see where we are uh and if there are any other partnership opportunities uh to make sure that we get some affordable housing, some more affordable housing projects. Uh, we do have some affordable housing uh in the city of Madera. If we can get that. I mean, I don't know if it has to be a workshop or it's just a just kind of an update to council.
Okay, come come. We can definitely provide council with an update.
Okay.
Um, I'll touch base with Marcella in the morning and um come, we'll get that over to council.
Thank you. Those are my comments.
Councilwoman Evans?
Yes. First, I want to tell Keith, say to Keith, thank you so very much for the new stop sign on Sherwood and Lake Street. Thank you to the engineering department. So I've seen some things that have been said about it, but it's it's something that is desperately needed. And with the children trying to cross the streets there, that's, I appreciate that. And I'm sure the community does as well. To the chief and code enforcement, thank you very much for the mental health, for the for the help of picking up the individuals and also for the cleanup in the in the riverbank. So thank you so very much for that. Um, I did attend the the Lourdes Wrecker um festival as well as the Feser Chavez, and both of those were very well placed, very well put together. It was really nice to be able to see the Lourdes Wrecker. That was something that was really awesome. Arquimio and I both went to Washington DC for the Housing Authority. And poor Ronaldo, he was catching it because I was sitting in in conferences and texting him and asking him different questions and just seeing if if we had anything of that nature going on here. And if there was grants that we could get, some of the information was quite enlightening. So I think that's about it for me.
Thank you very much.
Very good, yeah. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Mejias?
Thank you, mayor. Um, on March twenty first, I was invited by the Mexican consulate and and El Centro Nacional para el desarrollo indígena Oaxacaño. That's a long to translate. Um, to celebrate the uh birthday of Benito Juarez Garcia, former president of Mexico. For a lot of us here that are indigenous in the city of Madera, um, he represented, you know, he we we see ourselves reflected in him and the fact that he was indigenous. Um, one of his famous quotes, a son of the people, I could not forget that my only goal should be their greater prosperity. I think that's a good one to keep in mind as we serve our community. Um, so thank you for that. On um March twenty fourth, or actually, I'll come back to this. On March twenty sixth, it was a Sunday. Uh, thank you to the city of Madera Parks and Community. Thank you to the city of Madera Parks and Community Services Department in collaboration with the Tucci Mobile Clinic. We had a health clinic that served more than 70 residents. And we actually have a volunteer here, Joanna Torres, was volunteer interpreting. And we were able to provide residents with more than 343 services in medical, dental, dental vision and acupuncture. And we also had Jill and Jill and El Patron who donated food for the volunteers. So thank you to our small businesses here. So let's make sure that we support our small businesses that give so much back to our community. On March 28th, the Tuesday, we had our Stop the Hate Forum. And it was great to see our community get the resources they might need should they become victims of hate crime. Thank you to all, all the organizations that participated. And we had Councilwoman Gallegos, Councilmember Montes and City Manager Arnoldo Rodriguez present. So thank you for that. And also to the Parks Department, Department for collaborating with that. And I also heard Dolores Huerta speak at a fellowship, a water fellowship that I had mentioned I am a part of. We had leaders from all over the state. And so it was great to be a part of that. And we were pinned there. So we're now considered wellows. I will be approaching council members to talk about how you can participate in advocating for policies that make sure that we have clean water here in Madera and throughout the state. And one, for the last one, my ask is, I was part of a community forum where we had a lot of residents in Madera. They are asking our council to consider a resolution in support of a bill that was introduced by Senator Maria Elena Durazo that would create a program for undocumented people to get back what they pay into in unemployment benefits. As we know, during the pandemic, a lot of people saw themselves affected. They needed this kind of help that they pay into when they're working. And so we have residents in Madera that are in great support of this. And I am asking council members if you would be in support of considering a resolution. So to get this on the agenda.
I would have to get it out, make sure. I mean, I'd, I'd love to see that come back before us to see all that resolution. That's just to bring it back.
Yeah, to agendize.
Yeah.
To agendize.
Can you send us that resolution, the number? Yes, information. Thank you.
So to get four thumbs up to bring it back to, yes, okay.
And one last thing, sorry, Mayor. On April 20 through the 22nd, there's going to be a Salt of the Earth Conference. It's called Cultivating Climate Food and Land Justice. And the end goal of this conference is to raise money to create a public education, education center here in Madera. And it's going to be at the Madera Community College. You all have information here about it and hoping we can all be out there and support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Viejas.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Yes, I, Anita and I and Renee, right, the Housing Authority. We went to the Washington DC, like everybody knows that already. I was impressed with one, the last presentation on Thursday night. Housing Authority Department Start Panel Officer Housing of the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. And this presentation, I learned that the, the narrow have billions available for a state to request it. Of course, starting with the city requesting to the state, the state requested to Washington DC, so we can build more housing. The housing all over the United States is not, the, the, all the cities have and the states have problem with housing. So that's, that's, they, they were encouraged to, the city where the state requests the money to develop it and build more housing available for, especially for the poor people, for the low-income people, for the homeless, for all that. And, and that's, that's one good thing I learned. Also, this Matthew Desmond gave us a book. He was under the covert level. He went to school, he worked his way up to in Arizona University and applying all those scholarships and everything to, to, to study. He moved from one state to another state. And he also wrote this book about coverted by America. I started reading already. And it's talking about a lot of different events. He was writing the story about different persons that live it under drugs, under no, no home, nothing. So this book is very good because he was under the covert level too. So he grew up, he knows what it's feel to be in, in the, under the covert level and try to go up and be somebody. So that's what I learned. Also, this Sunday was the soccer tournament on Mayview. And they invited me to go to, to the open ceremony. And I was all day on there. So I saw those teams for fourth place and third place. And also first division and second division come out with who was first and second. So that was pretty fun. And that's my report.
Thank you. So again, like we attended, we were invited to come out to the Little League opening ceremonies. Thank God they didn't ask us to throw the first pitch, but they did make us run around the bases, which was like a heart attack city for me. Esmeralda Soria is an assemblywoman. Esmeralda Soria was gracious enough to invite the woman of her district and award them with Women of the Year awards. And she purposely did this event at the golf course, the municipal golf course here in Madera. So I thanked her for that, for, you know, she could have had the event in Merced or in Fresno, but she chose Madera and she had a really good event honoring the women of our district. We also were able to attend the Dolores Huerta Day at Madera Community College. It was a great event highlighting the, the beautiful college that we have here locally. Dolores was really, really excited to be here. She, we, she said at one point, I feel like it's my birthday. You guys are treating me so well here in Madera. So at the end of the program, we sang Happy Birthday, even though it was not her birthday. We attended the Cesar Chavez Day at Matilda Torres High School, which was attended, very well attended there that day. We went to the Easter egg hunt put on by all of our members of officers and safety throughout Madera County, which is everyone from the police department to highway patrol to probation department. It was a really good, really good day watching the kids go out there and get those eggs. I was introduced to the Madera County Health Department vans. They have mobile vans that are taking health out to the communities where people live and not just asking them to come to a building in the middle of town, et cetera. And so they'll go out to the community and they'll check the health status of people. They'll check the blood levels for diabetes. They'll check their heart, heart pressure, heart blood pressure, et cetera. They'll, they'll hand out COVID vaccinations, et cetera. It's really exciting to see these vans. They're fully equipped to be able to provide healthcare and take it out to the communities. And lastly, I attended a, a class last night, but again, by Madera County Department of Health. And they had suicide prevention information there last night. The numbers are here. I'm going to share this with Alicia. She can share this. And certainly you can look at, look it up on the Madera County Health Department, Public Health. And they gave us a class on Narcat. And each one of the attendees at Fresno Fair, I mean, Madera Fairgrounds received the class on how to apply this. And, you know, of course, we're not doctors, we're not nurses and we're kind of tentative, but the conditions that we are in right now, it's, it's scary. There are not, there are not only opioids in the home, which are legally purchased by people and have opioids in their home, which is dangerous because children can get into the medicine cabinet. But of course, the drug folks are out there selling fentanyl, et cetera, opioids on the street. And so I know that all officers are, have these in their, in their, in their vehicles and their train, the fire department, et cetera. But now they're reaching out to the public to get educated and have this available also. Because you never know when you might encounter a situation. And it's a big deal, just like trying to resuscitate a person trying to, you know, when, when they're choking, et cetera, you know, people are tentative about doing that because they're not medical professionals. And they have to get beyond that and get training on CPR. While we also are at the point now that we need to get trained on how to apply Narcat if it's, if it's, if it's necessary. So I'm very thankful that I, I attended that. They will have more classes. The Department of Public Health will have more classes available. You can look at the website. And hopefully you'll be able to attend something so that you can pick up something and possibly save a life. Never know. That is my report. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending. There are no closed sessions tonight. We will be calling for adjournment. The time is 9:20, 9:20 in the evening. I want to thank everyone for coming. Our next upcoming meeting dates are Wednesday, April 19th and May 3rd of 2023. Thank you very much and have a good night.